Good evening, everyone. This is August 16th, 2022. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council prior to our regular meeting of August 16th. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, so on our special meeting agenda tonight is one and only one item. That is an ordinance in action item. That is the subject. Consider conducting the first reading of an ordinance related to regulation of single-use plastic foodware and single-use carryout bags, which was continued from May 17th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, well, actually, let me go to our Madam Acting City Manager, Diane Thompson. Would you like to introduce the presenter for this item?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Good evening, Mayor Paul and Council. I'd like to introduce Ursula Sarova, who's our environmental manager, and she has a wealth of knowledge on this topic and has been researching it diligently for several months, and she will be doing the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Diane. I will start sharing my presentation. Hopefully, that is coming through.
It is.
All right. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Ursula Sarova, the Environmental Programs Manager for Cupertino, and I'm here to present about the proposed single-use plastic ordinance, which is a city work program item. My slide should take about 13 minutes. The concerns with plastics are well-known at this point, but as a quick recap, Cupertino has been on a path of addressing these over the past nine years through controls on single-use carryout plastic bags, a ban on expanded polystyrene foam foodware, and most recently, this single-use plastics ordinance, which is supported by the city's zero-waste policy. We brought the proposed ordinance elements to council at a study session on March 1st, and feedback from that meeting is listed on pages 1 and 2 of the staff report. Direction was given to bring a draft ordinance for consideration, making sure to include temporary waivers to reduce impacts to businesses, so I'll cover that momentarily. There was interest in coordinating with surrounding cities, but cities are really proceeding at their own paces, and to coordinate efforts would push our process out well beyond fiscal year 2223. The final one on the list, comparing the greenhouse gas impact of different types of foodware is addressed on page 4 of the staff report. But the important takeaway is that from a lifecycle analysis greenhouse gas perspective, there is not a real winner amongst the different types of single-use foodware. But here locally, compostable fiber-based foodware can be put in the green carts and bins without food being scraped out or cleaned, and they will get processed as compost, while single-use plastics would need to be emptied and cleaned to prepare for recycling. And even if properly prepared, the recycling markets for plastics are not that great. I will now describe what's in the proposed ordinance to help meet the goals of the city council. Under this work program item, we have prepared requirements that would shift us away from single-use plastic foodware and toward fiber-based compostable and reusable foodware. The first phase would allow us to locally enforce state law AB 1276, which requires that no accessories, such as utensils, straws, or condiment packets be provided unless a customer asks for them. That includes online takeout and delivery orders. This requires no change in purchasing habits or items used for serving food and beverages, just that businesses need to ask customers first before providing foodware accessories. The state law became effective June 1st, and we have informed businesses about it, but our local enforceability would become effective on October 6th of this year, which would be 30 days after the anticipated second reading. One year from now, Phase 2 would prohibit the use of single-use traditional plastic items for serving food, either for dining in or for takeout food. The ordinance would also prohibit the use and sale of single-use compostable plastic takeout foodware. The reason we are recommending the ban on both the use and sale of compostable plastic containers and utensils is that those are not accepted in Cupertino's organics program. They are contaminant to the recycling program, and if thrown away as garbage, they would go to landfill and generate methane. These items tend to be more expensive than other types of foodware, but essentially are marketing claims about compostability that are not able to be realized in Cupertino's waste management program. Compostable plastics are the most confusing for businesses and consumers because they are certified compostable by reputable testing agencies. But we have to remember that those items are not wanted by our local compost processing facilities. California in general has a much shorter processing time than national standards allow for. Cupertino already prohibits serving food and drinks in expanded polystyrene, AKA Styrofoam, cups and containers. But this ordinance would have us join other cities, such as Sunnyvale and Mountain View, in banning the local sale of expanded polystyrene foam foodware and temporary-use coolers. Allowable containers and utensils for takeout food and beverages would be fiber-based, meaning paper, paperboard, wood, bamboo and bagos, as well as foil-based containers and wraps. Plastic lids for hot and cold cups will still be allowed as there are minimal alternatives at this time. While fiber-based products are accepted for composting in Cupertino, they are not as valuable an input to the composting process as food scraps or yard trimmings, and they still require production inputs for just a few minutes of use. This is why shifting to reusable foodware wherever possible better addresses resource use, health, economic and environmental concerns. For those reasons, reusable foodware would be required for dining in. The reusables don't have to be fancy, just durable and washable and designed for multiple uses. At the recommendation of the Sustainability Commission, we also have drafted an amendment to the single-use carryout bag ordinance that would remove the exemption for restaurants bagging takeout orders so they would no longer be able to use the thin, single-use plastic carryout bags. We recommend having this begin in September 2023 to allow transition time, as many restaurants are still using the thin plastic bags. We also have a piece of code cleanup to recommend because our bag ordinance is out of alignment with state law, which requires that the 10-cent charge be levied on both reusable and paper bags. Currently, our code allows reusable bags, which tend to be the thicker plastic bags that meet the technical specifications of reusable, to be provided at no charge. In practice, our grocery stores appear to be following the state law already. There was also the idea of requiring that produce bags at grocery stores be required to be compostable. We are not recommending that requirement at this time as there is a state bill contemplating that action, as well as some concern about compostable plastics from compost processors. So we feel waiting for additional information is prudent on that piece. Understanding that these requirements could present challenges to some businesses, we have included a number of temporary exemptions. These could be applied for in cases where extra time is needed or there is significant economic hardship, or in cases where there is no compliant container that meets the specific needs of a food product. Additionally, small quantities of plastic straws can be kept on hand to provide to people who may need them. As an example of a potentially unique packaging hardship, bubble tea drinks are popular in Cupertino, and often they are prepared in a clear plastic cup that has film plastic heat sealed across the top that a pointed plastic straw can be stabbed through. This kind of drink packaging, with its expected look and user experience, might be considered a unique packaging hardship. A temporary waiver could be allowed while alternatives are encouraged and developed. One such alternative could be enabling a local pilot of reusable foodware for takeout orders, as was recommended by the Sustainability Commission. The Commission also recommended offering technical and financial assistance to businesses during the lead-up to and after the effective date of an ordinance, which would mean hiring a consultant with deep knowledge about food service to assist businesses in finding compliant products that meet their business needs. The photo in the lower-left side of this slide shows a before and after at a Cupertino restaurant from some years ago when they switched to reusables for dining in. The photos in the lower-right are products in use now in the Bay Area for reusables for takeout. And then above-right is one example of what a reusable option for bubble tea drinks might look like. Regarding the price of single-use foodware, this graph, which was prepared by staff at the city of Mountain View, shows that based on their findings and what we confirmed through checking, switching to new products are likely to be a mix of cost increases and savings, depending on the item quantities and sources. A longer list of cost comparison items was included in the study session packet from March 1st. Nearby jurisdictions are taking a variety of actions with foodware regulations. Mountain View just adopted an ordinance to require fiber-based compostables or aluminum-foil-based containers starting in January 2023. And San Mateo County is rolling out their model ordinance, which is being adopted by some of the cities there, which also requires fiber-based foodware, and the same for the city of Alameda. Other jurisdictions are interested, though, especially in requiring reusables. RFPs for assistance in transitioning to reusables have been issued by Alameda County, Palm Springs, Mountain View, San Mateo County, to name a few. It's also notable that Starbucks announced on March 15th of this year that they are enabling reusables, including in-cafe, drive-through and mobile order and pay. This table shows additional jurisdictions and their foodware regulations. Requiring reusables for dine-in would put Cupertino as the first in Santa Clara County to make that requirement. And here's the rest of that table, which shows that banning the retail sale of expanded polystyrene foam foodware would have us joining Mountain View, Palo Alto and Sunnyvale. But banning the sale of compostable plastics would be something new in the county. This table is on page 7 of the staff report. In an attempt to understand current practices and concerns, we conducted outreach in summer 2021. Our consultant, Environmental Innovations, partnered with a team from the Peninsula Chinese Business Association to conduct in-person interviews with food businesses, and they ultimately did 88 in-person visits and gathered a total of 99 survey responses from a variety of food facilities. Main concerns about switching away from plastic were the cost to switch and concern that disposable plastics are crucial for their operations and takeout orders. The specialized machines that heat seal plastic onto a plastic cup of bubble tea were specifically mentioned. We also reached out to a variety of special interest groups, as shown here. They were broadly supportive, but had some concerns, such as increased cost and scaling up dishwashing. As for schools, which would not be... apologies on that. As for schools which would not be covered under this ordinance, I did have a long conversation with the Food Services Manager at Cupertino Union School District and learned that they have already been taking certain steps to limit wasteful foodware. However, she did note two major barriers, which are that no schools have dishwashers and that there have been challenging supply chains for foodware in general on top of significant budget issues. We are keeping an eye on a bill at the state level that would fund installation of dishwashers at schools. Fremont Union School District has an engaged student group that is working on this issue with management in their larger sustainability goals. And I've connected with the food facility manager at Dianza, so I look forward to continuing those conversations. Customers also took surveys and indicated they are worried about the waste generated by single-use foodware. They support moving away from single-use plastic, are concerned about single-use foodware in general, and that they would continue to support businesses if they switched to non-plastic alternatives. To make sure food businesses are aware of this process, we reached out in this variety of ways to encourage people to tune into the study session and this first reading, or respond via the Engage page to let their voices be heard. After the study session, the Mercury News ran an article on the front page of the local section, which generated four supportive emails and several product offers. As I wrap up, I wanted to call out these points and questions for consideration. I do think it is important to raise the question of allowing a packaging exemption for bubble tea places doing the heat sealing full-plastic serving presentation. The draft ordinance allows a one-year waiver, but if there is additional guidance on that point, that would be valuable. The next big question is if we want to include an element of financial assistance as part of our process. A typical example from other jurisdictions hiring for this work was a specified budget for financial assistance with a cap of, say, $300 per business with some element of need-based selection. If that is desirable, we'll add it into the RFP, and it could be administered through the consultant. And as noted earlier, at this time, the lids are not prohibited as there are... Plastic lids are not prohibited because there are safety concerns and limited alternatives. This is similar to what San Mateo County has done. If council approves this ordinance tonight, we would be back on September 6th for the second reading. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Ursula. Let's do this. And as in keeping with our normal practice, we'll go to members of the public. And so for our members of the public, let's go ahead and feel free to ask any questions as well as make commentary on the presentation that you just heard. Then we'll go to our city council for questions and then further deliberation if we have a motion to entertain. So let's go ahead. We have two members of the public with their hands raised. Per our usual practice, we're going to go ahead and essentially provide people the three minutes that the first person, you know, has to speak to either raise your hand in Zoom to be recognized to speak, or if you're live in our hybrid meeting here at Community Hall, you can go ahead and fill out a blue card. And if you provide that to our city clerk during the time that the first person is speaking, we will also recognize you after our Zoom people are called upon. The third way to get your comments in during a public comment, and this pertains to both oral communications and public comment for each of the agenda items for the two meetings tonight, the special meeting now, as well as the regular meeting later, is to go ahead and mail city clerk... That's one word. Cityclerk@cupertino.org. And so if the city clerk receives that email during the time the first person is speaking, or, you know, it looks like it was sent during that time, then she'll go ahead and read up to three minutes of your commentary into the record. All right. So our two hands on Zoom are still Jenny, as well as Peggy Griffin. And so welcome, Jenny. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and that was a very good presentation. Everybody did a lot of work on this. It's nice to see that there are alternatives that can be worked out. I just had a couple of comments. I think you guys answered my question, which was about having lids available for takeout drinks. My mother-in-law and I and my husband ate out in San Jose last weekend. And my mother-in-law could not find any lids for her beverage, which she was taking out to the car. And she was rather upset about it. So that's why I don't... And I actually had gone back up to the counter because I needed a straw because of my tooth problem. And they did not have either lids or straws available at the self... It was a minimal, you order and pick it up, et cetera. And I didn't... I had to ask one of the cooks if I could have a straw. And then the issue about the lid came up. And my mother-in-law, she didn't have time or effort to go back over there, so she just took the drink out of the car with no lid on it. Now, it was a cold drink, but I remember being told that many, many years ago, my Cupertino grandmother had actually spilled hot coffee on her leg from a coffee shop, probably the Donut Wheel. And she got very, very severely burned. And that was when they started using the drink carriers. So I think it's very important that they have drink carriers available. If you have more than one drink, that you can have a little... I don't... Maybe this is reusable, but you have a carrier that you can carry it out with if you have two to three, and that you always have lids available because there... People can be burned if you spill... You can either slip if it's cold beverage, or you can burn yourself very, very badly if you do not have the proper lids. And that was just my comment. The other one was... The part I had a question about was the issues with people that are coming in, perhaps for Instacart. We have a member of our family that does deliveries with Instacart and various groups. And what are... And they'll come in oftentimes and pick up things that are ready to go, takeout, et cetera. What is being done with that for those people? Because they need to be protected. They can't bring in china dishes and things like that. They have to pick up things that are ready to go, that are packaged correctly, that they're not going to get burned or have food items that are contaminated, et cetera. They... Their livelihood requires them to get that bag of food to the destination. And I think maybe you guys covered this, but I didn't hear anything about that. I think Cupertino has a lot of places where people are picking up items for delivery, such as Instacart. And a lot of public members will go and pick up the food takeout orders. Yes, we're still going.
Thank you very much, Jenny. And our next speaker on Zoom is Peggy Griffin. And Peggy is still the only other hand raised, so Peggy will be the last person from the Zoom audience to speak on this item. Peggy, welcome.
Good evening, council and staff. I want to thank Manager Sarovia for excellent information and presentation. I have three concerns. First, the staff report talks about... Recommends that the prohibition against self-serve stations be removed in the ordinance. But when I read the ordinance, it doesn't look... It still sounds to me like you're not allowed to have a self-serve station like you have at Boudin's or The Habit or Akiz. And we experienced in Boudin's in San Jose when they took away everything that with their limited staff, it stopped their ordering process at the register. And the staff that had to prepare and serve the meals were constantly being interrupted to hand a packet of sweetener. And it got to the point where customers were so furious, they vowed never to come back. And then a month later, they went back. So it looked like it just wasn't manageable for them. So I would like to make sure that that, in agreement with the staff, remove the prohibition of self-serve stations. Also, the ordinance at 9.17.13 says single-use carryout bags, but it applies to reusable bags, too. So the title should be changed. And third, I'm wondering what the staff thinks, the consultant... How the staff will use the consultant? It sounds like $40,000 is not enough. But if each business is allowed $300 worth of consultant time to come to their place and work with them, maybe it is. I'd like to hear how the consultant is really going to be used and interact with businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. And Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards live tonight for this item?
No, Mayor.
Were there any emails that you received during the time of the first speaker?
No, Mayor.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and bring this back to council. Does anyone have some questions initially for Ursula and the presentation that was made? And I echo the sentiment that that was an excellent presentation, well worth the wait, and a lot of good things have crystallized over the course of the year, the last year and a half or so. So I'll go by a show of hands. Since... Are we all on Zoom here? Councilmember Moore and Leon and Vice Mayor Chow? Okay, so if you have any questions, since I have, you know, kind of, you know, three different things to be looking at, I'll just stick with my laptop here, and it'll just be consistent. I see Councilmember Willie is the first-hand raised. Councilmember Willie, questions for Ursula on this presentation?
Yeah. I'll echo. Good presentation, a lot of information, very detailed, well organized. It really helps us to move through it. So my question... You know, it's better that it's a question than a comment during deliberations. And that is, you know, the challenges of small businesses trying to dramatically change how they do business almost overnight in a very short period of time, as we heard from the resident and their experience at one of them. So the question that I would ask is, it sounds like there's quite a few options in the pipeline, but small businesses are focused on their primary function of their business, not going out and researching. And even if they did, the odds of them truly stumbling across what would be the most economical, the most preferred functional... So the question, can we get... Can we have somehow, in the city, a repository of these alternatives? And when there's maybe more than one option, that maybe they're kind of listed, ranked in order of how receptive the other businesses have found those different options. Code, here's a couple of different options, but this is the one that the other businesses have found most useful. Try and prevent relearning on, you know, a new business what the other businesses have already found. And so I just really think we need to help kickstart this more than just putting information out there, but actually having some type of repository to help move this thing forward. Because it is important. That's kind of the question, and I think it's better here than during deliberation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And how about Ursula? A repository that Councilmember Willie describes? And how about Ursula, a repository that Counselmember Willie describes? Any reactions or answers to that inquiry?
I was thinking about, San Mateo County has hosted a couple of gatherings and demonstrations for businesses to come check out foodware from different vendors and, you know, kind of experience in person and learn more about them. And then they also maintain a list on their website of compliant products and the vendors and where to get them. I don't know that it has that aspect of what's popular with other users. That's certainly an interesting thought, but our goal would be to provide as many resources as possible to help make this easy for especially the small businesses. And that technical assistance would be one of those aspects as well, where people would come in and help identify products that'll work, that are compliant, and try to help the businesses sort through all those options.
Great, thanks Ursula. We can try a couple of rounds of questions. So Counselmember Willie, I see your hands back up again. Let's go ahead and go to Counselmember Moore than Counselmember Way. I have a brief question, and then we'll head back to Vice Mayor Chow, and then Counselmember Willie, you can kick us off on the next round of questions before we entertain a motion. So Counselmember Moore, you're next.
Okay. Thank you also for the presentation. I was wondering about some of the questions from Member of the Public Peggy Griffin regarding the self-serve stations, so I'd like to have that item clarified. I'm not sure that I caught the ordinance number, because I have mine starting 1.97, so I would, there was an ordinance that was also mentioned, and I would like to hear about that. And I am interested in what your suggestions are for the BOBA exemption extension, if you have some language regarding that in order to extend it for another year. And also for financial assistance, I was curious about perhaps a suggestion to have the $300 per business with that being need-based. I'm going to assume that's what the mini-grants portion of the staff report was referring to, but if that's not, I'd like to understand clearly what the mini-grants part was. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks you very much, Counselmember Moore. Ursula, were you keeping track of those? I think there were about three questions there.
I think so.
Yeah, we could ask Counselmember Moore to repeat them once you get through one or two of them.
Trying to jot it down.
Okay.
So on the self-serve stations, it was our intention to remove the prohibition on self-serve stations. We had that in the earlier version that you saw in March. We took it out to just align with AB 1276, which has no such prohibition. I will, I thought we took it out of the versions of the ordinance, and we'll just make sure that that is the case. So that's that. In terms of an exemption, an extension exemption for the bubble tea, the exemptions, as they are listed now, allow for applying for a one-year, you know, additional one-year to come into compliance. And there are several reasons that you could apply under, one of which could be a unique packaging exemption. So if the council were to say that it's a specific need-based packaging, they could, you could give us that direction, we could just... So that would be my first thought on that, was that if, you know, if council feels that it's a need-based, specific need-based package, then that would fall under the unique packaging exemption. And then that would essentially give at least one-year extension. And then a question for City Attorney would be if our, if the way the exemption is worded would allow for repeat requests for extension, or if that one year would be the final.
Yeah, I can try to answer that question. So, yeah, so the way that the ordinance is drafted now, that extension would be renewable annually, so it's a question of whether that's council's desire. I would also add, with respect to the self-service stations, I do believe that that provision was removed. However, there are provisions of state law and Cal recycle regulations that they don't prohibit self-service stations, but they limit certain things that you can provide. So for example, you can only provide single-use accessories to customers upon request. That's a requirement of state law and regulations, so that may be where some of the confusion arises.
Great, thanks very much, Chris. Thanks very much, Ursula. Were there any other questions from Counselmember Moore at this point that you wanted to follow up on?
Regarding the financial assistance piece.
Right.
That was the third question. And I will say that the state law, just to go back to Chris's point, the state law specifically says self-serve stations are allowable, so, but it is confusing the way they talk about it. Anyway, on the financial assistance, the 300, yeah, the mini-grant is what I was, that's the same thing. And the 300 is just a model that has been used in the past that could, you know, provide a small business a fair amount of reusables or compliant foodware to assist them in getting started. And we could build in a need-based element to that as part of that project.
Okay, through the mayor, I'm still confused.
I'm sorry, Counselmember Moore, I just want to regulate the time. So in the second round of questions, if that works out okay, unless you're very insistent and have this urgent need to reiterate or follow up right now, I'd like to go on to Counselmember Way. Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
If it's very brief, then that'd be fine, but...
It's not clear about these, like Aki has a salsa bar with little tiny plastic containers. It's not clear to me.
Okay, let's elaborate on that.
They're gone or not.
Okay, great. Counselmember Way, and then Vice Mayor Chow, and then myself, and then we'll go back to Counselmember Willie.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I asked a question before the meeting, so it was answered, so I just want to kind of reiterate it. You know, we do have a fine, so I was very concerned about a fine. The first day is $100, second day is 200, and the third day is 500, and every after day is 500. So I was very satisfied with the staff's report, because if a, you know, restaurateur cannot, you know, remediate it within seven or months, that's a lot of fine. But our staffs answer it, they will work closely with our restaurants and small businesses to make sure that, you know, these are, they're giving plenty of time to be conforming. So I do think we, our city has this policy of working with businesses. And my recommendation is, I do think we, the city staff, maybe could work with the chamber and host, you know, information meetings, because the chamber does have a lot of membership who belong to this category. So maybe to work with the chamber on implementations. Thank you.
I'm going to take that as a form of question. So Ursula, with regard to Counselmember Way's suggestion, any thoughts on working in the chamber? I know that we have an economic development manager, right? So we do have that ability and wherewithal within our city to reach out. Of course, not every business in the city is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, so that's one thing to consider as well. But Ursula, any thoughts on that particular comment or question from Counselmember Way?
We certainly tried to get the word out through the chamber in multiple ways. We presented to them several times, and they emailed out information to their membership. You know, if they can be helpful in finding people in need of assistance, then I think that's a valuable resource.
Yeah, of course. I mean, you know, as a prior board president of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm not going to diminish it, of course, but then, you know, it is not a majority of businesses that are members of the Chamber of Commerce. So I guess maybe in follow-up to that, very briefly, what are the other outreach mechanisms if we're trying to reach more of a comprehensive whole of the entirety of the city?
We have done direct mailing, you know, to make businesses aware of this process. So we've actually mailed to every food service business, a postcard and a full-color flyer. When we did the outreach last summer, we actually just knew that going door-to-door was really going to be the best. And so I would definitely want to include some of that, because, you know, the restaurants are very busy, and it's just helpful sometimes if someone can just show up and talk to you in person about it.
Of course. Okay, well, thank you very much, Ursula. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow with your first round of the questions.
Could you clarify one other question Peggy Griffin raised about the cost of the budgeted amount, $40,000, I think? So what's the plan for that funding? That's from the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund?
Yeah, I can jump in real quick. The estimated cost of that technical and financial assistance RFP would actually be, we think, $100,000. And some of that is left over from the, from the Mayor's Cup Challenge, and then the balance could be pulled from the Resource Recovery Fund. So that's how it's proposed in the staff report.
Yeah, so the total is $100,000. And how will that be spent? We will be hiring a consultant, and they will be doing, in what, how would they spend their time engaging with businesses?
So the way we've seen this work in other jurisdictions is they, you know, they will do that door-to-door outreach, they'll find the people who need help, they'll put on these, maybe these mini workshops where they demonstrate the different kinds of compliant foodware. They're knowledgeable about food service, so they can get in and say, okay, let's look at your operation, where can we help you with this, you know, adoption of the reusables? Let's look at your dishwashing capacity. They have that ability, and they could help assess for the need-based, you know, help on the financial side.
Okay, so consultant will be experienced with what kind of alternative foodware is available for use?
Yes.
Great. And I do have a question. I think it's, we do want to win ourselves from single-use plastic, that there's just, people are so used to using them. However, going to reusable foodware, it does require washing, and it will require additional water use, and we're in a drought. So have you estimated how much extra labor cost that would mean for businesses and water usage?
Yeah, there's an organization that's done a lot of research around this called Rethink Disposable, and they have some published numbers of working with over 300 businesses around California. And they actually find that there's a financial savings with switching to reusables. If you're, if you've been serving on single-use items or dining in, you're generating a huge amount of fluffy, voluminous trash that you then have to pay to get rid of. So often, there's a savings on the trash service side. And then with efficient dishwashers, most businesses, of course, already have some form of dishwashing and sterilization, and often that can be, you know, used, I mean, there's the capability to use the existing to meet the needs of the reusables on site.
I know that there are some small businesses who are, whose site is so small, they, dishwasher don't even fit in their vicinity.
And so in the ordinance, we have, you know, if you, if your space absolutely cannot accommodate a dishwasher, then that is another option to request an exemption.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm going to go ahead and cut this off, so that if you have any follow-ups, go ahead and follow them up on the next round of questions. So I'll finish off our round of questions. So I really appreciate my colleagues and their inquiries. Pretty much covered everything that I wanted to ask about, except one thing. So Ursula, when we were planning out the Mayor's Cup Challenge with regard to the idea of generally sustainability in plastics, which is more of an, I guess, an overarching, you know, look at the problem of disposable plastics, or plastic waste in general, we were looking at a model potentially for the food service, right? We had lunch over there, where there was a business that would come in and actually provide the reusable cutlery and the plates. And I found that idea and business model very compelling, but then, of course, you know, when you're trying to change these behavioral patterns and create new models, you're going to run into logistical issues, you know? So when I think about what Vice Mayor Chow was just talking about, and it was a topic that was of particular interest to me as well, I think, well, what if we could actually bring in our own, you know, cutlery or plates, you know, into a restaurant? But then, of course, there would have to be some kind of certification system to ensure cleanliness, right? You know, hygiene is the major issue. Do you have any thoughts along those lines? I mean, are there, I know that the legislation right now is not really geared towards kind of spurring on these types of innovative uses necessarily, but any ideas on, you know, are there other areas that people are looking at? So for example, this idea of a business that would come in and provide the reusable cutlery and bring it in and, you know, take it out and wash it, and then, you know, presumptively use it again in a different context. I mean, maybe that, you know, could be helped with regard to the synergization of this type of requirement with this incipient, you know, industry through city action or something along those lines. Any thoughts on that kind of approach of looking at this overall issue?
There is definitely, there are services out there that provide that. There's one that's called Dishcraft that has a sort of a robotic, highly efficient washing and drying technique that meets all food safety standards, and they can, you know, they're mobile and can go around and meet the needs of smaller places that may not have access or ability to do dishwashing on-site. So we could see a growth in that kind of service as an example. And besides that, I, yeah, with the bring-your-own, I think that could be challenging, as you note, but some people do it for takeout if the restaurants are on board with that, but...
And the restaurants that you're aware of that actually accommodate that, I mean, how do they get around the whole idea of, because I know sometimes you can just bring in, you know, a coffee mug, for instance, into a coffee shop, right? And then they'll go ahead and fill it up for you. I mean, right. So is that like kind of a gray area with regard to regulatory authority and all that kind of stuff? Or, you know, where are we sitting with regard to, you know, that part of the pragmatism of trying to, you know, pass mandates and say, okay, you're going to have to use reusable stuff? And, you know, the practical realities of a lot of these businesses having, you know, you know, it may cost something, but at the same time, you know, at the same time, it may not necessarily be cheaper, right, on a case-by-case basis? So, yeah, I guess that's just food for thought, so to speak. And I'll go ahead and, you know, start our next round. You know, before I do that, let me just say that a lot of this is about, you know, kind of spurring on those types of conversations and thinking to try to figure out where we are going to go on the next step, once we, you know, pass the legislation. So it's certainly not, you know, something that's going to end here now and, you know, just be fixed for permanence or anything like that. So let's go on to Counselmember Willie, and with a quick time check, we're at 6:13. If we can do this next round of questions in, let's just say, the next 10 minutes or so, that would be ideal, because then we would have a bit of time to consider a proposal for a motion going forward. Counselmember Willie, you have the next round.
Yeah, just to follow up on the last question that I asked, if I back up one second. All these questions, I think, are great questions. We want this to be successful, we want to move forward, and these questions, I think, are largely questions that the businesses would be asking, the customers that would be asking. So that's great. So then back to the question that I was asking about how to assist the businesses in being able to move forward fairly quickly and not make mistakes, wind up with the wrong foodware for what they've got. They've already bought cases of it, and then they find it's either not strong enough, whatever. So I was real happy when you said that to get connected with all the businesses, you know, you tried the mass mailers and things of that nature, but then you went out door-to-door. Yes, you know, I hate to, I hate to think that, you know, we always have to resort to that, but I think we should always be on the side of being conservative, so that we do, really do get as much interaction and engagement as possible. That being said, now we're back to what is showing to be the most beneficial alternative foodware? And that repository, you had mentioned that San Mateo had a list, but if I put myself in the provider's shoes, pizza parlor or, you know, some other takeout, I would pretty much be at a loss, you know? Ask me about cheese and sauces, great, that's my expertise. Ask me about other ways to get it for takeout, that wouldn't. And that's where the list like San Mateo might seem like sufficient, but I think, you know, repository where you could actually even, after each type of foodware, you could list the businesses that have chosen that over the other ones. If we're going to be assisting monetary-wise...
Okay, Counselmember Willie, let's go ahead and wrap up. I think we get the gist of your commentary there, so let me go on to Counselmember Moore, because we're kind of allocating a couple of minutes each for our follow-ups here before we bring forth a motion. So Counselmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to clarify, do we need to, I'm looking at the section, I believe, in the ordinance, and I'm wondering if we need to add in the BOBA exemption line? I'm not entirely sure about that, and then I need to go back to the self-serve station item and clarify that. So first, with regards to the BOBA.
Okay, very briefly, Ursula or Chris, do we need to add in more language for any kind of bubble tea exemption? It sounds like basically what Ursula was asking for was some direction as to whether, for example, with regard to the unique packaging exemption, to say, hey, you know, go ahead and apply that to, you know, bubble tea shops or places selling that. But would you guys like to speak to that question? Either Ursula or Chris?
I can just say that, you know, there is some discretion on behalf of the director, I believe is how it's phrased in here, to issue the exemptions. And if the food provider can demonstrate that no reasonably feasible alternative exists for a specific and necessary prohibited single-use food service ware item, then they could qualify. So if, I'm looking at Chris, but if, you know, we get direction that this kind of heat-sealed, you know, bubble tea products are, if we feel they meet that specific and necessary definition, then that would be one way to go about it.
All righty.
So, yeah, I would just add that the ordinance as drafted has the exemption process that Ursula described, and so that would be available, you know, that would be available for bubble tea shop operators to apply for, just like other businesses, you know? And so, you know, as drafted, we would apply the same standard to them as other businesses. And, you know, for some of the reasons that Ursula described in her presentation, they do have unusual challenges in meeting the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. May I move on to the next part?
Yes, why don't you continue? If you can be economical with your time, please.
Sure. Thank you. Under C2, condiments such as sauces, ketchup, or mustard provided for onsite consumption shall not be served in disposable individual serving packets. Okay, if you go to Aki, there's a salsa bar, you've got little tiny plastic containers with clear lids, you use those for in-dining or takeout. So what happens with those? It sounds like that that would count as condiments, the salsas and et cetera. So I'm going to assume that they're going to have to provide some different containers for onsite dining, and then for takeout, could those potentially be a hardship item? Because I just, I don't know for that particular size, if that's going to be a challenge. I have seen some small containers used by Pacific Catch for similar things. So I'm assuming that the requirement is that if you're taking it out, they're going to have to provide some paper, fiber-based alternatives. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, fiber-based, and then hopefully adorable little ramekins or little trays of some sort that could be washed for dining in.
Okay, and then the last part is, you're talking about people with disabilities who might need to be accommodated for use of a straw. My concern there is the HIPAA concern and the individual person needing to identify themselves as being a person with disability when they're making an order for food online. And so I don't want that to happen. And then it also seems that for the website, online ordering, the individual would need to have an option to ask for some kind of cutlery, and then be able to ask for a straw. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I, yeah, we wouldn't need to ask why. I think we would just leave it as, I need a plastic straw.
Great, thanks very much. So let's go on to Counselmember Way. So let's go on to Councilmember Wei. Do you have any follow-ups? Okay, great. So Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you. So I, so actually, I have something, okay, first I have a question regarding the cafeteria. So on item 14, it says that the food providers means any establishment provider, nonprofit vendor, or business operating within the city that sells prepared food. So anyone who doesn't sell the food, if they provide the food for free, then they get to use plastic?
Okay, does anyone want to field that question from Vice Mayor Chow?
I'm trying to scan quickly. I don't believe that was the intention, but I would need to find that definition and confirm.
Number 14 in the ordinance.
All right, food provider. So this does limit it to selling.
Mm-hmm.
So that is an interesting point, if you feel like it needs to be, if that's all right, or needs to be broader.
Maybe next revision, yeah. So I think, for example, a lot of companies do provide free things and then they might tend to use a lot of plastic. And this does not apply to school cafeteria, right? CUSD, FUHSD, or Deans College?
Correct.
And what governs their use of plastic is the state law?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So I would like to propose something. I feel like this ordinance is putting a lot of burden on the businesses while the customers who are actually benefiting from all the single-use plastic have no responsibility to reduce the use. But it's really the businesses are there to serve the customers. If we can change the consumer behavior and build a culture that this proof of single-use plastic and everyone make it a habit to bring your own utensil pouch, and this is actually a pouch provided by the County of Santa Clara, our Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission. It has a spoon and a fork and even chopsticks. If people bring this to parties, to restaurants, shouldn't, I hope that in addition to the ordinance, we promote the behavior of reducing plastic use so that there is actually less customer demand for plastic utensils than when, in one year, when the business implement the ordinance, there is, there will be less resistance and the customers would actually welcome the change because they have changed their behavior and they want this thing. So I think that's a better way to promote this kind of ordinance. So it seems the ordinance should come with a promotion program. And I think, I wish the program would include a school cafeteria and company cafeteria because these are the people who go to the same venue every day and probably use one plastic utensil every day.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow.
They can bring in and bring it, wrap it in a paper towel and bring home to wash.
Right.
That would be safe a lot.
All right, if you'll recall, allocated a couple of minutes. So let me go ahead and ask my final follow-up question here. So with regard to our ban on compostable cutlery, you know, one of the points of the exercise that we had, that was a council-supported part of the Mayor's Cup Challenge, right, was to look at a problem from various perspectives, right? I mean, you've got the industry perspective, you've got the perspective of the science, and I just kind of wonder, where we're at right now, one of the factors is that the science hasn't caught up with being able to process a lot of these compostable cutlery pieces. Is there anything baked into our draft ordinance here that would speak to changes in our capabilities? Whether it's with our waste management, you know, mechanism or, you know, perhaps changes in the actual composition of compostable cutlery, or so-called, I should say, compostable cutlery, right? So is there anything contemplated in there, Ursula? You know, is there a periodic check-in with regard to whether, you know, this aspect of the legislation is still necessary? Because I think to be really good legislation, it should speak to not just anticipating those changes, but as Vice Mayor Chow is pointing out, perhaps even helping to encourage, you know, particular patterns of usage and behavior.
There's nothing built in beyond just bringing, you know, a change to the ordinance to council if...
Which is always our prerogative, you know, as a council. So, okay, you know, I think we have a pretty good suite of questions and follow-ons at this time. I see Councilmember Moore has a hand raised. With a time check, we have approximately 15 minutes at the very most that we can be continuing this in the special meeting because our regular meeting starts thereafter. So I would take a motion to take under advisement the comments and questions that have been asked by council to perhaps, you know, change some of the, you know, current proposed draft ordinance provisions. But let's see what Councilmember Moore has in mind with regard to, a hand raised. Is there anything that you'd like to propose as to placing a motion on the table?
Yes, I do think one thing, that the change away from the plastic cutlery will, that the alternatives aren't so appealing, really. And I think that that in and of itself might inspire people to want to ensure, make sure that they've got their own cutlery pouch, like the Vice Mayor was showing. And I hope in the future we perhaps provide those at Earth Day. I think that'd be a wonderful idea. So I actually like the recommended action with the addition of adding the $300 Need-Based Financial Assistance Mini Grant up to a total of $21,000, which would be about 70 restaurants that could apply for that. That, I would like to start with that as the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table with regard to the recommended action plus a $300 per-business mini grant. Okay, so do we have a second for the motion? Vice Mayor Chow, you have a hand raised. Would you like to second the motion?
Yeah, a second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. The motion is on the table for consideration, which is essentially the recommended action here. And I think, you know, we do have a good suite of questions as well as commentary over the course of the last couple of rounds. I'll take a show of hands with regard to starting off discussion on this, if there are any desires. So I see Vice Mayor Chow, so try to use your Zoom function if you can, Vice Mayor Chow. But Vice Mayor, you wanted to make some commentary on this.
Yeah, first, a question, is $300 enough? Would the administration cost even go beyond that? So would that be, I'm wondering about the amount. And then second is, I actually wish to add a friendly amendment so that we include the program to really build a culture of using reusable utensils and bring your own to picnics, to parties, and to restaurants. And that, it's not a well-formed plan, but I hope something could come back so that by the time this is implemented, we are building a culture that's welcoming this ordinance.
Okay, let's take these in order. So the first question has to do with regard to whether $300 is enough. I have an addendum question to that as well. What's the overall budget for this? And so Ursula, did you want to speak to that? Because I know that part of the, you know, contemplation was, I think, that amount for outreach. So, and the overall budget, I think, would have been basically what's left over from the $100,000 council ended up allocating, you know, for these types of purposes. So Ursula, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I've still seen 300 as kind of the standard that I've seen out there with RFPs, but I don't have more to add to that in terms of talking to the consultant about what that looks like these days. But when we talk to, I mean, that's just what I've seen out on the streets recently still.
Okay, how about this? With regard to Vice Mayor Chow's friendly amendment, because, you know, obviously we're not going to bake it into the legislation itself, but maybe we can conceive it as instruction to staff to return to us within, say, I don't know, the next six months or nine months, with a proposal for doing what we're describing, trying to get a little bit more consumer buy-in, so to speak, with regard to the behavioral changes, things like using cutlery, perhaps even making a check-in with regard to the state of how, you know, things are progressing overall in the field. Is that something that would be amenable to the movement? Let's go to Councilmember Moore. You're the mover on this motion. Would you accept a friendly amendment along lines of what Vice Mayor Chow was describing?
I'm a little bit, a little bit curious about the fiscal impact. Page 10, PDF 22 of the package. If the ordinance is adopted, staff recommends contracting for technical and financial assistance. That isn't actually summarized in the recommended action. And it says that the cost to hire technical assistants as described is expected to be approximately $100,000 to cover support both before and after the implementation of the most significant changes, including offering a defined number of small grants to help cover the costs of switching to reusables or purchasing compliant foodware. So I'm going to assume that about $21,000 that I'm talking about is already within this $100,000, which it sounds like it is. And that with regards to the friendly amendment, I think I also need to amend mine original motion to include that the recommended action includes that the $100,000 recommendation from staff for contracting for technical and financial assistance. So yes, I accept the friendly amendment, but I would also like to make sure that we go along with the staff recommendation for contracting for technical and financial assistance.
Okay, so it sounds like what you're describing is folding in the fiscal impact. And remind me again what you just stated with regard to the friendly, the actual friendly amendment request. Were you amenable to that or were you not amenable to that?
Yes, that's fine. And I just want to make sure because I only talked about the $20,000 as though it was separate, but really when I'm looking at the staff recommendation, it's that my $20,000 is, it's already been included.
Okay, okay. And since we're in the second month of the fiscal year, how about we provide direction, come back in one year? So that can actually get folded in the work plan, you know, for the upcoming, because we have a set work plan. And I would suggest come back in 12 months and then we can, you know, do the follow-ons here. Is that workable for you as the mover and as the secondor?
I believe so. I would ask, I'd like to hear what Ursula thinks about that.
Ursula, coming back in a year, does that work for you?
So that would be a month before we go live with the ordinance being enforceable, correct?
Right, that's right, right. A year...
Too short.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like maybe checking in earlier might be valuable, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my concern is really with work plan, right? We have a pretty full work plan for the upcoming fiscal year, which will end on June 30th. So I could even say sometime in July, if that would work a little bit better, a couple of months before, you know, this is looking to go online. Is that something that would be somewhat more amenable or are you thinking more along lines of six or nine months out from now?
Sorry, was that to me or Councilmember Moore?
That was to you, Ursula.
Okay.
So are you thinking, 12 months is too long and then you'd prefer something like six months or nine months? Or would something like July of next year also work?
Six to nine months seems like a good idea to me, but...
Okay, so my consideration here is in six to nine months, that's actually still within our current fiscal year, which we haven't actually placed a work plan item on for that. So I just want to be careful about that in terms of adding stuff, right? In terms of, you know, we've already gone through the process. And if we can do it within, you know, the next fiscal year, I think that would be, you know, pretty ideal. So let's just say the first meeting in July, you know, kind of aim for that, if that's, you know, kind of workable.
Or is there a range that, I mean, just given the vagaries of agendas, is there a range that would work?
Yeah, July or August is what I'm suggesting. Yeah. You know, I mean, I guess with this, I mean, it could be considered a follow-up to what we're doing right now. Vice Mayor Chow, you have a hand raised. And a quick time check, we're at 6:36 right now, so let's try to wrap this up in about five minutes.
Do we have any other work program items that fall under sustainability department? So they are, they have no capacity? I'm just curious. And...
Honestly, this could be seen as a follow-on to the current work program item that we have for this particular, you know, discussion. So I mean, I suppose that would be, I guess it's fair enough to, you know, accommodate and maybe we can say a six to nine-month range if that's, you know, something that's workable.
I think we let the staff give us a recommend, study their workload and then...
Right. Especially if the, you know, a pertinent staff member is actually evincing a willingness to come back in six, nine months, I think that's probably...
Also, I want to make a comment that this kind of ordinance is a first step towards the right direction. We may not get everything right. If this, in any case, create a hardship for any business, please come and talk to the council. We are all willing to work with you to make this, we, you know, to make this work for everyone.
Yeah, great, great comment.
So it's better for the environment, but then we don't want to hurt anyone's, the economic outlook of Cupertino either.
Right, absolutely. We're very flexible and willing to listen. And so let's go ahead and confirm this as the mover, Councilmember Moore, six to nine months is the direction to staff to come back with the content that was discussed. And with the secondor, Vice Mayor Chow, let me just hear verbal yeses, if that's okay?
Yes, I think that's the right thing to do.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I don't see further hands raised from council at this point. Madam City Clerk, could you take a roll call vote on the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and thank you very much, Ursula, as well as members of staff for helping to put this together. We stand at 6:38 right now. We'll reconvene in approximately seven minutes for the start of our regular meeting. We'll see you there. Good evening, everyone. This is 6:45 PM on August 16, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. However, before we convene that regular meeting, I'm going to go ahead and open back up the special meeting that started at 5:30 because it was adjourned in error. We needed to conduct the first reading of the ordinance that was on the special meeting agenda. And so I will ask our city clerks to do that. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the first reading of the ordinance that was under consideration?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 22-2239 as modified, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending city code to change the name of section 9.15, adopt new sections 9.15.090 and 9.15.125, and amend sections 9.15.100, 9.15.110, 9.15.120, 9.15.130, 9.17.130, and 9.17.140 to regulate the use of single-use food service ware by food providers, regulate sale of single-use food service ware and expanded polystyrene foam coolers, and regulate single-use carryout bags, which includes a finding that adoption of ordinance, of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA.
Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And the ordinance was moved by Councilmember Moore and seconded by Vice Mayor Chow with modifications already in the special meeting. And so at this point, seeing no hands raised for further commentary, Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on that motion with the first reading already read?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes. Great, thanks very much. And so now with that very briefly, we are on to the regular... And so now with that very briefly, we are on to the regular city council meeting of the City of Cupertino for August 16th, 2022. If you would please join us for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And so let us conduct the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And on our agenda tonight, we have our first item being under ceremonial matters and presentations. The subject is a presentation from Safer From Wildfires on achievable and effective wildfire recovery and readiness measures for homes and businesses. Madam, uh, Acting City Manager Thompson, would you like to introduce the presenter for this, this item?
I'm going to ask our city clerk, um, Kirsten Squarshad, to introduce this presenter.
Yes, we have Mary Beth Baikowski, who is a representative from the Safer Wildfires, um, agency.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, Mary Beth, and please take away the presentation. We can see your screen has shared.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Mary Beth Baikowski. I'm an analyst in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch of the Department of Insurance, also known as CDI. I'm happy to be with you to share with what we've been doing on your behalf. I would like to start by giving you an, oh, oops, sorry, moved my screen too much. By giving you an overview of CDI and the role of the Insurance Commissioner. Currently, the Insurance Commissioner is Ricardo Lara, and under his direction, the department uses its authority to protect Californians from insurance rates that are excessive, inadequate, or unfairly discriminatory. He makes sure insurance companies have enough funds to pay claims, sets standards for agents and broker licensing, performs market conduct reviews of insurance companies, ensuring that they are compliant and in good standing. And we resolve consumer complaints and investigate and prosecute insurance fraud. The one thing we cannot do, however, is require or compel insurance companies to sell insurance to a particular person or community. So California's devastating wildfires are a call to action. We're using every tool available to improve insurance for Californians. These last three years, after some of the most devastating wildfires in our state's history, we've prioritized meeting with the wildfire survivors affected by wildfires across the state because we found out that this is no longer just a Northern California issue, it is a statewide issue. Throughout this time, we've met with more than 25,000 people in 40 counties and held 60 events specifically to hear all the concerns about both availability and affordability of homeowners' insurance because we needed to take in all, take it all into consideration as we looked for solutions. Learned from the public and our first responders, the commissioner started working with the legislature on laws that helped wildfire survivors, including increase in payouts and benefits such as coverage for evacuation expenses, extensions to ALEs, those, the additional living expenses, as well as increase in coverage for building code upgrades. If consumers were experiencing losses, they should receive the benefits they paid for with their coverage. So we also implemented a law the commissioner wrote while he was in the Senate, given temporary protection to more than 4 million residential policyholders in areas that the governor declared a wildfire emergency. This law gives a one-year moratorium on insurance companies canceling or non-renewal residential insurance policies, regardless of whether you suffered a loss, helping to give people security while stabilizing the markets, such as after the CZU Lightning Complex fire in 2020. Additionally, we increased the non-renewal notice insurance must give you from 45 to 75 days, allowing more time to find alternative insurance following a non-renewal. Now, we also ordered improvements to the Fair Plan. As you know, the Fair Plan is the insurer of last resort. What you may not know is the Fair Plan is not a state agency, nor is it a public entity. It is a fire insurance pool comprised of all insurers doing business in California. The Fair Plan was established by statute in August of 1968 in response to the Watts riots. When the commissioner took office, the Fair Plan's coverage limits have not been increased in decades, while the Consumer Price Index had doubled over that time. He ordered increased coverage limits for both dwelling coverage and commercial policies, giving people twice the coverage they had before. In addition, we worked with the legislature to authorize coverage for farms, wineries, and other agricultural businesses, which were previously prevented under law from access in the Fair Plan. And finally, the commissioner ordered the Fair Plan to offer a comprehensive option to homeowners alongside its standard limited policy. The Fair Plan sued us, but a judge upheld the commissioner's authority. They appealed and were back and forth, but he will not stop until consumers have this option. So there's a lot more work to do. In our meetings with communities and leaders in this space, the commissioner realized everyone was working on this issue on their own in silos. So he became instrumental in creating the Safer From Wildfires framework. This is an inter-agency partnership between CDI and the Emergency Response and Readiness Agencies and Governor Nusantin's administration. Its purpose is to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. We are working with Cal Fire, Cal OES, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and the California Public Utilities Commission. So let's go over these three steps or areas of protection under the framework. We call it the 123 Plan. It begins, number one, with protecting the structure. This means giving you specific things you can do to ensure your roof, walls, vents, windows are upgraded to be safer from wildfires. Number two is protecting your immediate surroundings by clearing the vegetation and debris from under your decks, removing combustible items and outbuildings away from your home, and creating that dispensable space in compliance with local and state ordinances. But step three is involving the entire community in fire protection. This includes items such as your safe evacuation routes with contingency plans, clear funding resources to implicate, implement, and mitigation activities, and programs like Firewise, which brings neighbors together to protect their homes. This community-wide part is critical. By working together, we can do much more than we can do on our own to make our communities safer. There's nothing more frustrating than you doing a lot of work to ensure your home is safe, but still getting dropped because your neighbor's home is a fire hazard. Safer From Wildfires aligns with recommendations from the State Fire Marshal's Low Cost Retrofit List and Fire Chiefs across the state, along with recommendations from groups such as the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety and United Policyholders. These standards are achievable and effective strategies for homes, businesses, and communities. To ensure the success of the Safer From Wildfires framework, the commissioner introduced new regulations based on really single concept, again, coming directly from the consumers we have met across the state. When you do the work, you should see the reward. By making homes and businesses safer, we are bringing risk down, and this will bring costs down, too. The commissioner's actions are focused on safety and transparency, and his new regulations do this in three ways. First is pricing. He's requiring the insurance companies to incorporate the Safer From Wildfires framework into their pricing, driving down costs for consumers. Insurance companies will have to submit new rate filings that recognize safety. Transparency. Consumers will receive their property's wildfire risk score, which in the past has been considered proprietary, and the reasons for it, and CDI will have oversight. And lastly, consumers will be able to appeal their risk determination when they have done the work. Public input is critical to ensure that we were on the right track. We held a hearing on April 13th that accepted public comments. CDI is now evaluating all of that input from the public, and we look to have these regulations implemented by summer's end and the new rate filings completed by 2023. So that concludes my presentation. I want to remind you that we are here to help you with any of your insurance questions. We have a hotline, 800-927-4357. We have a dedicated, educated staff that their, you know, callback rate is two minutes. They can go very deeply into a homeowner's policy. Um, if you have a request for assistance, they will help with that. But we also have a website, insurance.ca.gov, where we actually have a list that you can go to to see who is writing insurance in your zip codes and, um, lots of other little fun places there on that website with lots of information. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, well, Mary Beth, this is a ceremonial and presentation matter. We typically don't, uh, ask the questions, but, uh, we are very grateful for, uh, Insurance Commissioner Lara's efforts statewide, and we're very happy to have you here today. Um, we do have the recorded presentation and all the really wonderful information that we have for residents, uh, in your presentation on, uh, online and available on the city YouTube channel and archived online as well for our Cupertino.org website. So thank you so much. Always welcome back. And, um, hopefully, we can keep up that great work over at the State Insurance Commissioner's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so let's go on to our next item on the agenda, and that is, um, orders of the day, postponements and orders of the day. Madam City Clerk, are there any requests from staff with regard to postponements and orders of the day tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Staff has requested reordering the agenda to hear item number 23 regarding the memorandum, memorandum of understanding regarding conditions of employment for the Cupertino Cities Employees Association, um, to reorder it to hear, um, item 22 uh, after, sorry, let me, let me, let me repeat. Reorder the agenda to hear item 23 before item 22, um, which is regarding the Unrepresented Management and Confidential Employees Group.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and ask any other, um, requests from our city council for postponements or orders of the day. Um, I see Councilmember Moore has a hand up. Councilmember Moore, and then, uh, we'll have a, a comment from Councilmember Wei as well. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, I would like to see item 24, uh, our last item, uh, which is to discuss the priority housing sites. I'd like to see that moved to be right after the consent agenda, if that's possible. That would put it, um, actually, actually, we'll put it right before item 21 under ordinances and action items. Um, I'd like to see that moved there. Uh, do I need to give a reason?
Uh, no, you don't need to give a reason, um, but if we're going to do this in motion format, I would like to have a discussion. I, I, you know, I don't anticipate anything outside of our consent calendar, if anything gets pulled, um, being all that lengthy. And so I would be okay with having everything, uh, other than the consent calendar items, if they, if one or two gets pulled, um, after item 24. Uh, because the, the ones that are not on consent, I think they, they should be relatively fast. So things like the employee, you know, agreement and, you know, our, um, compensation essentially uh, for, for the employees, the benefits, I, I think it's important to, to, to have those addressed, uh, this evening. I, I don't anticipate either one of them taking more than five minutes. And so what I would suggest is item 24 come before anything that could be potentially lengthy. What I see frankly is if anyone pulls from the consent calendar, uh, the, the climate action plan, okay? I would say let's put the climate action plan after item 24, for instance, if, if that happens to get, that get pulled. But I don't really anticipate other things being, you know, really particularly lengthy prior to that part of the agenda.
May I clarify?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not entirely sure. Are you wanting to go 23 before 22, then have 24, and then have consent items that might be pulled after 24?
Yes, if that's okay.
Okay, so, so moved.
Okay, uh, well, let me, let me gather, um, Councilmember Wei's comment as well. Councilmember Wei, your hand is no longer up. Did we cover what you were wanting to say? Okay, uh, so I'll, I'll go by, I'll, I'll verbally describe your head nod on Zoom. So, uh, we'll, we'll move on from that. Okay, so, uh, going back to Councilmember Moore, you would like to put on, um, the dais of motion to put item 23 before 22, and item 24 prior to any consent agenda calendar item that ends up getting pulled. Is that correct?
So 23, 22, 24, then consent items, and then continue on with the rest of the, um, agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? I'll just go by a raise of hands, uh, or hand in the Zoom function. I see Councilmember Willie has a hand raised.
Second.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Um, and I'll go ahead, I don't see any further hands raised from, from council for discussion on this item. And so, uh, let's go ahead and conduct a roll call vote on, on this. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and we are now on to oral communications. Oral communications is for any item that is not on our agenda that the public would like to speak about. If you have your hand raised in Zoom, uh, before the, uh, first speaker is done speaking, then you will be called upon. Uh, if you have a blue card filled out before the first speaker is done speaking, then you will be called upon after our Zoom hands. And then, uh, the third way to go ahead and be heard during oral communications, and I remind everyone again, that's anything that's non, uh, non-agendized tonight. Uh, you can email our city clerk, city clerk, all one word, at Cupertino.org in the time that the first person is speaking. And that first person is going to be Jenny. Uh, you'll have three minutes, as with everyone else. We also have Don Halsey and Peggy Griffin. As of right now, on our blue cards, we have Elizabeth Yip, Brooke Ezot, and Rhoda Frye. Um, and so they will speak after the, the Zoom speakers. Jenny, welcome.
You have none muted. Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Darcy, um, Mayor, Mayor Paul. Um, you know, I just wanted to, uh, mention, uh, we, we're at the end of the bill legislation cycle and bills are wrapping up and getting ready to go to the governor. And I was very, very disappointed to see that AB 2097, which is Assembly Member Laura Friedman's, uh, parking minimums bill, had gotten, it, I think it's on the floor, it's going to go to the Senate for another vote. Then I think it goes back to the Assembly and then it's off the governor's desk. This bill, um, this is the second iteration for it. They had AB 1401 the last year and a half. It's the same problems. Nobody, they're not asking the public whether they're, they, they need parking places. Um, that I, I'm, this is such a local control issue bill. Um, no one has asked the public about whether they want to, like, lose parking places. People need parking places for shopping. Seniors need parking places. Um, people who have small children or schoolchildren who decide to drive them. I mean, this is a democracy. We, supposedly at the federal level, you have the, um, you can make your own decisions about how you take your children to school. You can have them walk, ride bikes, rent a bus, but you can still take them in your car. And I, I really have a big problem with this Laura Friedman bill because it, it's the same thing that happened a year or two ago with the other bill. They don't ask the public what they need. Um, reducing parking places in new construction, to me, is one of the, I, I'm going to be blank about it, one of the stupidest bills I've heard of, and they just don't get it. I hope the governor sees fit not to sign it. It got shot down in, I guess, January of 2022, like, on Valentine's Day. She resubmitted it again under a new name. So there's a lot of money pushing this bill. Just because a developer doesn't have to pay $30,000 for a parking space in new construction, doesn't mean that a senior will be able to get into their shopping site. It's, they, they don't think about the public. The other one terrible bill is AB 2011 by Buffy Wicks, which is basically you can build ministerial on any commercial site, housing, uh, office park, whether you have land contamination or not. The ministerial mindset has got to go. It, it's, yes, parking is one thing, but you cannot repeat, cannot build housing affordable or whatever on contaminated.
15 seconds.
Land. And this is where, this is another extremely stupid bill. I am sorry to use that kind of. I am sorry to use that kind of language, but I've seen this type of stuff come up. You're in danger.
Thank you very much, Jenny. And we still have only two other hands raised in Zoom. Those are from Don Halsey and Peggy Griffin. Madam City Clerk, were there any other additional blue cards that came in during this time?
Yes, Mayor, I have a request to read an email that was printed, actually, and handed to me.
Okay, very good. So, you'll read the request for the email after our three blue cards, and then we have two other hands in Zoom, the first being Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, City Council, City Attorney, and staff. It's election season, and by definition, it means you are going to be bombarded by information from all types of organizations. Many of these organizations refer to themselves as nonprofits. When I hear the term nonprofit, I always thought they were all what the IRS calls a 501(c)(3) organization. It does not pay taxes and allows your contributions to be tax deductible. I assumed that the term nonprofit meant a purely educational, nonpolitical, unbiased organization, but that's not always true. This year, I found out that there are at least 19 types of tax exempt organizations, each with specific purposes and allowable activities. Contributions to them may or may not be tax deductible. Can you show the whole screen, please, Kirsten? Scroll down. A 501(c)(3) is a charitable organization, generally prohibited from directly or indirectly engaging in political campaigns and lobby. A 501(c)(4) civic leagues and welfare and social welfare organizations, they can engage in political activities with limits, like the League of Women Voters Cupertino-Sunnyvale. A 501(c)(5) is labor, agricultural, horticulture. A 501(c)(6) is business leagues, chamber of commerce, real estate. Our Cupertino Chamber of Commerce is a 501(c)(6). They can engage in political activity and advance the business interests of their members. The list goes on. Next slide, please. Sometimes, with some big organizations... Next slide, please. Page two. They have two heads, but some people refer to them as one. One head is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit and usually focuses on education. And the second head is their corresponding 501(c)(4) that does the advocacy. It is often difficult to see who contributes to these nonprofit lobbying advocacy groups. It also can be difficult to determine what is educational and what is advocacy. Bottom line, you need to do your due diligence when dealing with a two-headed organization. They have their own priorities that may not be in line with yours. To be on the safe side, get your information from a one-headed 501(c)(3) organization like Ballotpedia, and take the information from two-headed organizations with a grain of salt. Here, you've got AARP, and the correction on the right is it should be AARP Foundation is education. And on the right, AARP without the foundation is the advocacy. They advocate for seniors. The ALCIO has the same kind of thing. The foundation on the left is educational. The right is advocacy.
15 seconds.
Okay, the bottom one is League of Women Voters Educational Foundation is educational. League of Women Voters Cupertino-Sunnyvale is advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our next speaker is Don Halsey. Welcome, Don.
Thank you to the council and those in the audience for listening to me for the next three minutes, and I hope to be back. I'm going to comment on Blackberry Farm, which is a hot topic in the community. I became aware recently that it is being considered that maybe Blackberry Farm will be ended, and as an alternative, it'll be turned over to natural habitat. I did send in some slides, if they could be, please, presented. That would be good. Hold a second. While that gets done. I'll carry on now. Time is limited. So, for Blackberry Farm, I'm sure there are many people who are passionate about bird watching, and there are other people who are passionate about playing golf. And some people are passionate about taking hikes in the woods, others that are passionate about taking their children out to a golf course and introducing them to the game. Blackberry Farm does that, and the natural habitat does the other things. And we're presented with a choice. And again, if I could request that the slides that I sent in, please be put up on the screen. That would be good.
Sir, would you send them now? I do not see them.
Oh, really? I got an acknowledgement that they had been received. Let me propose this. I will do that. Why don't we just reschedule me for another five minutes or something while that all takes place, okay? Is that okay?
We have three minutes each, sir, for public commentary. You're always welcome to come back on September 6. As a courtesy, I do see our video division has paused your time. And so, let me ask you this. Do you know who you sent the slides to?
City Clerk.
Cityclerk@cupertino.org. Okay. Well, City Clerk is saying that we don't have them here. So, why don't we provide you the remainder of your time now?
I will proceed, as crippled as this is. I sent two emails in to the city on July 19. I presume you got those. I received an acknowledgement. Actually, I received a reply from Councilman Way saying thank you. The first email had to do with just the economics. Blackberry Farm and the open space were compared in a nice table, and that was presented. And they looked at the costs and the expenses, and Blackberry Farm came out $2 million ahead. That's a $2 million difference favorable to keeping Blackberry Farm open. So, that would tend to kind of make you lean one way, I should think. I also checked out prices of other golf courses, and Blackberry Farm is at a 28% discount. And so, I said, why not raise it? Well, if you did that, it'd be a $4 million, $4.6 million favorable to Blackberry Farm. So, I encourage the council, especially those that are running for election, you should favor something that conserves money for the city. The second email had to do with homeless sites, and that's an issue at other golf courses. I had photos in there for Los Lagos, where it's a problem. Also, for... I did an analysis of Santa de Muni, and they have it too. And if we widen Blackberry Farm, I think we may be inviting a homeless problem that we presently don't have. So, there it is in short form for economic reason and risk mitigation. I think it's pretty clear a council member should favor keeping Blackberry Farm open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Don. And we will go on to our blue cards now. They are from Elizabeth Yip, Brooke Ezot, and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Elizabeth. And so, Elizabeth, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, and I'll start sixth grade at Miller Middle School in the fall. I am part of Girl Scout Trip 62748, and I would like to discuss an urgent issue that needs our community's attention: the drought. Right now, California is having less rainfall, which leads to increasing use of our underground water. Eventually, we will run out of water, so we need to act quickly. On August 7, I went to the Cupertino Library and taught kids and adults about water conservation and why we need to save our water. I handed out bookmarks and flyers. That was a great experience, and I wish more families could become aware of this crisis and help save our water. On August 11, I spoke to the Cupertino Union School District School Board about educating kids about water conservation at schools, like how they teach them... How to teach students about what to do during fires and earthquakes. This would help with the water crisis. This can also help bring awareness to water conservation at the Cupertino school community. I'd like to get this important message about saving water to the rest of our community. I hope the city council could organize more community outreach events, such as a water conservation day to teach families about why we need to save our water and how to save our water. One idea is to have a free swimming day at Blackberry Farm and set up booths near the pool to explain different things on the drought and water conservation. This will surely educate the community on how important water is to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Our next speaker is Brooke Ezot. Welcome, Brooke.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to discuss the lobbying ordinance, which, as you know, went into effect in July of last year. And my question is, if it was such an affront to the devotees of the First Amendment people, the Third Amendment folks, and the Fourteenth Amendment folks, and advocates of the California Constitution and the US Constitution, why wasn't it challenged at that point? It seems that only wine and cheese get better with time. Cupertino is not an outlier in requiring lobbyists to register. Many neighboring communities have lobbying ordinances. The county has a lobbying ordinance. And if you go to their website, they have a database that lists the name of the lobbyist, the organization they're lobbying for, which public official they met with, and how many times. To quote the lawsuit, "Transparency is essential to an accountable government." If you go to the US House website, there's instructions on how lobbyists should register. They also have a searchable database, which has numerous reports that are logged in by the League of Women Voters for quarterly and annual reports. To me, this is not a question of free speech, right to assemble, equal protection. These are sacred concepts that are being thrown out and used as red herrings. This is really about whether or not government has the authority to regulate professions for the public good and whether lobbying is a profession. And the answer to both is yes and yes. You wouldn't want an unlicensed neurosurgeon operating on you. You wouldn't want unlicensed teachers teaching you. And as public officials, I'm sure you don't want to meet with unregulated lobbyists. This is a compact you make with the public. You don't achieve transparency by withholding information. I'm very disappointed in the league and its stance on this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Our next speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. If you could turn on the slideshow. Just wanted to talk a little bit... Recognize Mr. Halsey. I am a proponent of golf as well. And golf has been considered to be... The city has looked at it a number of times about getting rid of it. And there was a plan, actually, to replace the water system, something around, right around 2002. So, it's been in the plans for a long time. I took a look at the new plans or proposal for the so-called Back to Nature Plan or whatever it is. But really, it looks like a city park with some nature plannings, park courses, 40-car parking lot, outdoor education classes. I think we can have our cake and eat it too and have nature plannings at the golf course. And, you know, if we're going after golf courses, maybe you have to go after soccer fields and baseball fields and all that other things. I see a lot of communities using golf. I don't play golf. Last time I went bowling, I actually knocked down pins in the lane next to mine. So, I am not a golfer, never will be golfer, but I think it's good for the community. Okay. So, as usually, I'm going to talk about quarries real quick to wrap it up. On August 18, the county will be hearing... Getting an annual report on the quarry with our Hewlett meeting. And this is a four-page letter here from the Department of Mining Reclamation. And they say that Lehigh's reports, plans for reclamation basically are inadequate in terms of funding them. So, I'm really glad the DMR is starting to look at it. The county is saying that Stevens Creek Quarry is in compliance. However, their conditional use permit expired in 2015. They've been doing these ongoing compliance agreements, and it seems like they've been moving the goalposts. Unfortunately, we have not getting those reports from the county, nor are we getting a geological report that was supposed to have come out in July regarding the Jäger Yard landslide above Permanente Creek. Furthermore, I'm concerned that the county has allowed the construction and operation of a new aggregate plant from a backman foyer. I learned that the air district permitted the plant under bizarre circumstances where their legal team asked the science guys to recalculate the cancer risk. Now, this comes...
Excuse me, I don't see the document on the Zoom. Could the video device...? Oh, great.
I have it on the screen over here.
Thank you, Rhoda. Please proceed.
Can you redo my time, please?
Video, if you could pause Rhoda's time for approximately 15 seconds. Thank you, Rhoda. Please proceed.
Closer to 20. Okay, thank you. Anyway, Backman has a history of alleged destruction of pollution records per whistleblower lawsuits. And just recently, their CFO was muzzled from disclosing, quote-unquote, "ongoing and escalating illegal activity." Illegal activity. This really increases my concerns. Now, a little bit about water. Sunday, New York Times, here on the front page. Sunday, New York Times. This is about expected catastrophic floods in the state of California. Here is a picture of, in 1983, flooding near Block School in Los Altos along Permanente Creek. This flood was a quarry-caused flood. Where is a landslide above Permanente Creek? It is a hazard. It has been a known hazard for years. And now, we have the potential of a delusion in our state. And I've been asking the county, time and time again, to do something about it. And I don't think it's right to just wait until FEMA comes in and starts... You know, they're saying it's a hazard to homes and structures downstream. We're looking... This is four miles downstream from Permanente caused by the quarry. So, this is a big issue, and I hope you all can follow up on it.
Thank you very much, Rhoda. Appreciate it. So, we'll go ahead and move to our city clerk. There was an email that came in. Would you like to read up three minutes of that email, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, this is from Dinesha Tchamansky. Dear Counsel, I would like to express my disappointment over the Sunnyvale Cupertino League of Women's Voter lawsuit against the city of Cupertino regarding the passage of our lobbying ordinance. The LWV's webpage claims that their mission is to empower voters, defend democracy, and ensure that our government serves the people and not wealthy special interests by promoting transparency, limiting super PACs, and eliminating dark money. So, why would our local LWV oppose a lobbying ordinance that ensures that ensures the very political transparency that they espouse? The common public perception is that the LWV is a neutral, unbiased organization for voter education, but sadly, the truth is that they are a 501(c)(4), which means that they can and do take strong positions on political issues and legislation. For example, on their website, they have links to California YIMBY, the lobbying organization behind the draconian housing policy that take planning decisions away from residents and their councils, putting those decisions into the hands of developers, real estate interests, and politicians in Sacramento. The LWV lawsuit against our city appears to be in defense one of their very own members, the publisher of the propagandist local newspaper, Cupertino Matters, which has gone so far as to tell residents how to vote. Additionally, that person also happens to be running for the Cupertino City Council. This lawsuit has exposed us to a whole new side of our local LWV. Our mayor and council absolutely did the right thing to pass a lobbying ordinance to protect our residents against clandestine and duplicitous special interests, as have many other cities, including Long Beach, San Diego, Oakland, Richmond, Berkeley, San Jose, Santa Clara, and San Francisco, plus dozens of other California cities. So why isn't the LWV suing them? Hmm. The LWV claims that ordinance is a, that the ordinance is a deterrent to residents' free speech and that it will make people afraid to speak up at city council meetings. But the ordinance clearly states the circumstances which would qualify a resident as a lobbyist. They would have to speak, they would have to speak at three minutes, three-minute orals over two-hundred times a year or the equivalent of ten hours, which is obviously impossible, or to be paid or to be reimbursed for their efforts. I believe such an occurrence would be rare unless one was actually a lobbyist, and therefore, they should be identified. The LWV was silent when the lobbying ordinance was publicly discussed and reviewed at council meetings over a year ago. Now suddenly is an issue. That being said, this lawsuit is looking more like a pre-election tactic to protect the LWV's very own city council candidate while simultaneously vilifying our resident-focused incumbent council candidates and those who support local control. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Kirsten, as well as Dinesha. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. After oral communications, we have reports by council and staff. Under those reports, item number two is the first item. Those are brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. Yes?
I'm sorry, Mayor. When I'm looking at, under oral communications, it looks like I can ask a clarifying question. And I just want to make sure that what we were hearing about the lobbying ordinance was accurate. I don't recall hearing the, the number of minutes that an individual would need to speak for three minutes to counsel for a total. I just wanted to make sure that that item was accurate.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and refer that question to our city attorney, Chris Jensen. Chris, a very brief clarifying question from Councilmember Moore with regard to the speaker comment that our city clerk was reading into the record.
Yeah, so I'm happy to follow up with, with counsel in a confidential manner, given the fact that there is pending litigation related to this question.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And so we'll move on to item number two. Those are brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. I'll remind everyone that our prior meeting did take place, I believe, on July, third Tuesday in July, because the first August meeting, on August 2, was canceled as part of our summer recess. So ever since July 19, if there are any brief updates that the council would like to provide to the public with regard to activities, and by brief, we're allocating about a minute for each council member. I'll go by a show of hands on Zoom. I don't see, no, actually, I do see a Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Willie at this point. So Councilmember Way, why don't you kick us off on this set of reports?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Of all the activities, I'll pick three and be really brief. July 23, the Asian American Business Council of the Cupertino Chamber hosted a night market at Deans College with twenty-plus food trucks and then performances from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It was very successful. We estimate there are a few thousand people that were there. So I'm very happy that we provided that entertainment venue for our residents after COVID or during COVID. And also, I'd like to highlight that I attended a Women in Municipal Government Conference that's hosted by the National League of Cities in Sacramento. And I learned quite a bit. We have quite a few sessions and networked with women council members. And so next year, I'm hoping that our women council members will go together. And last one, I want to highlight the Peninsula Division of Health Cities. I'm only exactly bored. We are hosting two events, so I'd like the council members to mark your calendar. September 21 is our annual City PAC fundraiser at the Lodi Garden. And we, our fourth education seminar will be on October 19, Wednesday, 11 to 1 o'clock. And so watch out for the emails. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. Let's go on to Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and add. On the 27th was the Toyakawa Bell Ringing for Peace. Pretty important these days. There's so much turbulence worldwide going on. To take, to take a couple hours to reflect on, you know, peace and how important it is. It's actually the anniversary for the bombing of Japan during World War II that ended the war. So hopefully, we learn something from that, hopefully, and we'll move forward. And then on the 14th was the flag raising for India, celebrating their independence and the democracy that they ushered in 75 to 76 years ago. Once again, during these turbulent times, we need to understand the importance of democracy, being free as people to pursue the things that are going to make us each happy. So with that, I'll leave it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And next we have, let me see, by the show of hands, Vice Mayor Chow is raising her hand. And Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So on the 30th of July, I attended the Recycling Day event at Homestead High, hosted by Students for Society Organization. They have multiple chapters in Montavista, in Mountain View, and I think over 22 chapters. And they, this is their first in-person event since the pandemic. They are planning to have monthly events more focused on environment this year. On the 6th, I also attended the Bell Ringing for Toyakawa City, such a great day to remember the victims of a tragedy, but then celebrate a world peace. On the 13th, I attended and gave a speech at Hackathon organized by We Love STEM, which is a student organization, received a Quest Award this year. And I talked about how, how you could combine politics and STEM in your career. And on the 15th, I attended the Indian Independence Day. This event was extremely well-attended. I'm really glad that, thank for the sister city, Cooper Nashua, for organizing the event.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And Councilmember Moore, did you want to report out anything?
Okay, well, I also attended the Sister Cities 75th Anniversary of Independence for the country of India and the world's largest democracy. But I wanted to make sure that you would be making a remark about the farmer's market. Is that coming up?
Oh, that's actually part of the subcommittee update, I would imagine. And if no one was going to announce that ribbon cutting this Sunday, I was going to remind them during that time. So, so let me go ahead and, I guess, expound upon that. This Sunday, we have a ribbon cutting for the relocation of the West Coast Farmer's Market from Memorial Park over to Deans College. Great kudos to our subcommittee comprised of Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie for working on that. So that's going to be this Sunday, the 21st of August, over at Deans College Parking Lot C. The ceremony will be at 8:30. The farmer's market itself will open at 9:00 a.m., per their usual practice. A couple of other items that I wanted to remind the, or at least let the public know about is that on August 27 at 4:00 p.m., we're going to be having a Lawrence Mitty Annexation Ceremony. And so we will ask people to show up at Sterling Barnhart Park by 3:30 p.m. The gates will be opened. And thanks for city staff for being willing to open up those gates for us on the weekend. And we will be just conducting a brief ceremony with some remarks by Supervisor Semidion from the county, as well as Vice Mayor Chappy Jones, who we worked in close conjunction with in order to get the annexation completed from San Jose. So the very following day, we're hosting an augmented reality workshop. And so that is going to be very exciting. It's on Eventbrite right now. And so go ahead and sign up. That's, we're taking the sixty, the first sixty signups. And so we're going to go ahead and hold that at Deans College as well. That's at the Science Center and Parking Lot E. If you're, if you're going in from Stevens Creek Boulevard and turning into the parking area on Mary Avenue, you want to veer off to the right. So all the way up the right along 85, and you'll eventually see Parking Lot E on your left. So, yeah, well, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to our next part of the agenda. This is also under committee, I should say, council reports. So after having the brief updates since our last council meeting, we will now have a somewhat longer update. Those are two minutes each for committee assignments. And these are for council committee assignments that are, by and large, provided at the end of the calendar year. And so would anyone like to start us off on the council committee assignments ever since July 19? Councilmember Moore, I see your hand is up, followed by Councilmember Willie. So that was from before? Okay, so Councilmember Willie, why don't you start us off on committee assignments?
Oh, I'd be happy to. I get excited about clean energy, renewable energy. So we had our monthly meeting and the updates for this month. Two of the power provider contracts that Silicon Valley Clean Energy has work to get are now going to be going live. One is Casa Diablo GeoThermal Plant in Mono County. And that will add seven megawatts to the grid. And then Mountain View Wind Facility in Riverside, not Mountain View, California, or Bay Area, it's Riverside. And it's going to add 33 megawatts to the grid. And then previously, I've spoken about the charging for multifamily. And Silicon Valley had put aside 1.5 million to facilitate that. They have increased that to $6 million now for including affordable housing project. Let's, let's put these chargers where they're really needed and that they wouldn't be otherwise. And so I'll rest at that point. So thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And we have Councilmember Way next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'll follow with Councilmember Willie's report on Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I'm on its Finance Administrative Committee. And we had a meeting, and we went through in detail on the 2022, 2023 budget. So we'll go to the board for approval pretty soon. And I'm happy to report that Silicon Valley Clean Energy is in good ground. We finance and was very conservative, but also very well-financed organization. And I also attended the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority Board Meeting. I want to report in exact news. We are working very closely and very vigorously with interoperability talk groups. That's a work in progress, but that is going to happen so that when disaster hits, all the agencies can talk with each other without interference with our regular communications. So that group is working very hard. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Moore, would you like to provide your committee assignment updates from July 19 going forward?
I just attended the mayor's meeting for, with commissioners. So the Public Safety Commission is going to host a Public Safety Forum in October. And the Fine Arts Commission and Sustainability Commission both are going to join the Night and Day Festival on September 24. And at the same day, there will be a Bike Fest. So two events in one day. And the Bike Pet Commission also is busy, busy working on a lot of projects. The VJ Zero is getting a new consultant. And we, they are looking into Stevens Creek Phase Two and the new bike facilities. And they, so they do have a question, how, how the city could coordinate two events on the same day. That would be great. And another question was the communication with school districts. Hopefully, there will be, there could be more collaboration with school districts in advertising events like Bike Fest and Day and Night Festival and Public Safety Forum. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, do you have any updates from July 19 forward?
Sure. Let's see. The Audit Committee met on July 25. And we went back to basics to refine the Budget Format Subcommittee mission. And we have been working to improve the monthly treasurer's reporting, which you'll see in our consent agenda today, and that's going very well. I think the next meeting will probably be pretty interesting because we're having an internal audit update. This is on August 22. An external audit subcommittee and RFP kickoff, which is important. And we will be going over the Budget Format Review Fund Balance Policy, very important. And if anyone has any questions or comments on OpenGov, any questions, you've had it all about using it, please come to this meeting and ask all of your questions there. And let's see, VTA PAC met on August 11. And I think what's probably most important for people here is that we recommended for the, to the board that we reduce the express lane toll violation penalties and late fees. And that puts us in line and consistent with the rest of the Bay Area. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And so I'll briefly report out on two activities related to my committee assignments. I'm on the VTA Board of Directors, representing the five West Valley cities, including us. And so as part of that board membership, I went to the American Public Transportation Association's seminar that they have for various board members of transportation associations across the country. That was held in Salt Lake City from July 29 until August 3 of, well, you know, just a couple of weeks ago. And so they were really, really excellent conversations that we had over the course of these several days with regard to the various things that are happening to agencies all across the country. And one of the things that I felt extremely fortunate about is that, you know, even though we do have some turnover here, it was good to be able to see from the perspective of agencies across the country that not all of these types of situations are the same in the sense that the great resignation is real. And it seems to be hitting public agencies in fairly different ways than private agencies. But it's very much a turnover issue that's going not just across our region or state, but across the country. But some of these things that I've heard from public transit agencies across the country is that for, for some agencies, you have things like, you know, sexual harassment, embezzlement, drug usage, being basically the drivers of a lot of these turnovers at the top of the agencies. But what I realize is that we're actually extremely fortunate in the sense that we have extremely, you know, thoughtful people committed within our community, within our council, and our employee base is, you know, it's, it's interactive, I think, is, is the best way that I can describe it. But each of these steps have helped improve us. And I think that we're very fortunate to be able to, you know, have that situation. So APTO was a great conference. It wasn't just that. We went over things like microtransit, similar, similar to what we're doing for the, you know, the Via Shuttle here in Cupertino, for instance. A lot of other issues having to do with transportation and transit that we discussed over the course of this, this time. The other item I wanted to update us on with regard to the committee assignments is that as part of the West Valley Mayors and Managers Group, we do meet on a monthly basis. Last month, we met over, I think it was in Campbell, and we talked to representatives from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They're doing some really wonderful things, as has been related by our SVC representative earlier today. And I want to put in a plug to thank our acting city manager, Diane Thompson, for allowing us to kind of split the duties because at the very beginning of that time, I actually went over to the, the employees appreciation luncheon at Blackberry Farm, where Diane was pulling that duty, presenting the certificates to the various employees there. But at the same time, as we have a new city manager coming in on August 29, she was gracious enough to, you know, say, hey, go ahead and bring Pamela Wu to the West Valley Mayors and Manager Luncheon. So that worked out really well because we're not actually having one this month for the West Valley Mayors and Managers because we're basically taking a summer break. So I think that transition worked really well, and things are going quite smoothly in that regard. So let's go on to the next item on the agenda. The next item has to do with subcommittee updates. And so this is something that was introduced to our regular agendas a couple of items, a couple of meetings ago. And we have several subcommittees that are opened up. And so we're going to go ahead and provide our council subcommittees the opportunity to give us an update as to the activities that have happened since July 19 in this area. Would anyone like to go first on subcommittee updates? And I see Councilmember Moore, as well as Councilmember Willie. You still, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. Did you want to provide a subcommittee update at this time? So let's start with you, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So the, on August 2, the City Hall Subcommittee, which comprises myself and Councilmember Willie, we met with Susan Michael, Matt Morley, and Diane Thompson. And we took a tour of City Hall, including the basement areas. And we have our next meeting scheduled to go over the topics of seismic details, parking, and the EOC, which will be happening in the next week or two.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Let's go on to Councilmember Willie for a subcommittee assignment. Or a subcommittee update, I should say.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for actually easing into the topic of the farmer's market. It's just I can't, can't let this slide by. It's, it's been a long couple of years. The farmer's market has struggled ever since they were pushed out of the Oaks when the developer bought that and then started closing it down. And so at that time, graciously, our city manager allowed the farmer's market to go to the upper parking lot at Memorial Park. And for the last several years, it's just been an extended stay over and over and over again with no long-term plan. And so we've, we've been working, Vice Mayor Chow and I, for a couple of years, considering different sites and, and along with staff, considering different sites. It is a very popular and very large farmer's market, which really limits the places that can hold it. We received so many emails over the last couple of years from residents that thought it might disappear when its stay had elapsed. that thought it might disappear when its stay had elapsed. And so, we stuck with it, and Deansa College, as you had said earlier, will now start hosting it, starting with this Sunday. Just to let the people that are listening, you know, the farmer's market believes that they're getting on the order of about 5,000 shoppers coming through the farmer's market during the 9:00 to 2:00 o'clock time period on Sundays. That's huge. That's huge. And it would have been such a disappointment if our community were to have lost that. So, rest assured, everyone, it's going to be staying at Deansa College. And Deansa College is really helping to facilitate this by waiving the charges that would otherwise be imposed, that would otherwise increase the cost of all the items that people would be going there to purchase. So, it's been a win-win situation for the community, for Deansa College, for the farmer's market people. So, I'll leave it at that. We're on a roll. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And then, we have Vice Mayor Chow with a hand raised.
Yeah. I think Memorial Park Farmer's Market is moving to a good home, hopefully a long-term home. And they might be able to expand with more parking, likely more food trucks that they are looking forward to bringing. However, I heard that Creekside Farmer's Market, which is a Friday morning, is in danger of closing down, because the church next to the site has not allowed them to use the site. As a result, they have very limited parking.
Let's leave it at that, Vice Mayor Chow. So, let's go. And I appreciate your efforts, and I think that's good to point that out. But before we get into the deliberative process, I'll just remind you that the subcommittee was formed with regard to this particular move from Memorial Park potentially to another location. And so, job successfully well done. We can talk about perhaps expounding upon the role of the subcommittee in the future, but we hear what you're saying, and we thank you for your work. So, are there any other hands raised for subcommittee updates or assignments? I don't see any other new hands. So, were there any other subcommittees that you wanted to report out on, Vice Mayor Chow? Okay, great. So, next on our agenda, I believe, is our city manager update. So, let me scroll through. Yes, it is. Subject number, item number five, city manager update. And so, our acting city manager, Diane Thompson, welcome. Would you like to provide your update?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Paul and City Council. I have just a few items for you. First of all, the Climate Victory Gardens Pilot Program that you may remember. This is a pilot program the city has been operating for the past year. And the program provides direct support to property owners who wish to remove grass and install drought-tolerant gardens at their residences. By the end of the pilot program this December, we project that we will have completed 43 landscape consultation site visits, 25 garden installations, and 41,603 square feet of area converted from turf to drought-tolerant gardens. All of these numbers exceed the goals which were set for the pilot program. And we have approximately 80 people on the waitlist or the interest list if the program continues. We plan to bring a presentation to the council within the next few months with options for moving forward potentially with the program. And then, I just wanted to mention that Movies in the Park is in process. We've had two very well-attended movies on recent Friday evenings at Creekside Park. And the next two movies will be this Friday, August 19th at 8:00 p.m., and again on August 26th at 8:00 p.m. For more information, go to Cupertino.org/recreation. And since this is my final council meeting, as your acting city manager, I just wanted to thank the council for their support and cooperation as I've been functioning in this role along with my assistant city manager role. And we're looking forward to the new city manager, Pamela Wu, starting on August 29th. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. And we thank you for your professionalism and good stewardship of our city as we're in this transitional period. Item number six is a department update. This is actually a new type of update that Acting City Manager Thompson and I were in agreement to provide. Just the parameters of this is going to be five minutes each time, and we'll just kind of cycle through, hopefully, each quarter as to various activities that are happening around the departments in the city. The first department update is from Information Technology IT. And our Director of IT, Bill Mitchell, is here to provide that update. So, Bill, you'll have your five-minute update for IT. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for providing Innovation Technology this opportunity. I'll be moving through this fairly quickly, but first, what I want to do is I want to introduce two of my very talented team members that will be joining me on this. Terry Gerhart is the GIS manager, and then Benny Shea is the infrastructure manager. I'd like to share my screen with you now.
And I'll confirm we can see it.
Great. But what I'd like to do is talk about, we'll start with projects. And that's what we're going to be talking about today for the most part. I want to start with the council work program items. So, the first one on there is the most important, is the council work program dashboard. And as you may remember, there is a FY22 dashboard on our website today that depicts all the projects that the city is working on through the direction of the council as far as what work they want to be done. So, the FY23 project is being worked on today and will be posted sometime in the October timeframe. But FY22 is there now. FY23 will be up in October. Online Store is another application that we're working with. We're partnering with Tina Kapoor from Economic Development and Esther Kwan from the Communications. We've had an initial kickoff meeting to develop scope, roles, and responsibility, and moving forward. Also, license plate recognition is another one. We're meeting with Captain Marina from the Sheriff's Office and Tom Chin from Emergency Services, again, talking about roles and responsibilities and next step. Cybersecurity Education is one that came from the Technology Information and Communications Commission, also called TIC. And we have developed a subcommittee. Commissioner Eliza Dhu and Raj Padiradhan are the subcommittee members. And we will be meeting in the future to talk about scope for work and deliverable. Next, I want to talk about some recent successes that we've had. The first one is the business license. This is partnership with Finance. This is an online application that allows for the renewal and payment of business license process. In practice, a person is able to apply, pay, and receive a business license without coming to City Hall. CodeHub is another project that we recently implemented. It's a partnership with the City Clerk and Planning. This is 3D interactive map of zoning code information. It provides in-depth parcel-specific zoning data. The zoning and land development code is digitized into an easily searchable tool. Next is Logical. Logical is a partnership with the City Attorney and City Clerk's office, which enhances an e-discovery tool. When we get PRA requests for information, this tool allows to automate the backend processing, making it much easier and quicker for the City Attorney and City Clerk to respond. Wi-Fi Expansion. So, this year, we put in Portal in Creekside Park with Wi-Fi. Wilson is scheduled for October, and then later this fiscal year, we'll be adding Memorial and Jolly Man as well. Now, the next one is Digital Transformation and Transparency. We have a little bit of a list here. So, seller permits, allowing people to do online applications for processing for residential solar, cybercrime vendor, and SB 9 preliminary review. Agency Calendar is a very exciting tool that we just put on board. It's an online tool that provides the status of permit applications, allows for notification of new permits applied for within a specific area. So, you could actually say, I want to look at all the permits that are coming in this area, and you'll get a notification of that. All records relating to planning and building dating back to 2005 are on this application. And moving forward, we are digitizing all the businesses' processes that we can. We've had over 30 business processes done recently. Examples include new hire vendor request, leave conversion, and payroll direct deposit. Also, the city put an intranet hub and training management application that is becoming very useful for staff to exchange information and understand what all policy procedures internally are. Again, what I want to tell you is that all these applications will be demoed at the September 7th TIC Commission meeting. That's at 7:00 on September 7th. So, if you actually want to see these things in action, come to our meeting. And then, finally, I want to talk to you a little bit about our FY23 major applications that we're working on. You're aware of the CIP Capital Improvement Application. This application will streamline CIP projects or manage, bring consistency to the way CIP workflows and reporting happens, combine CIP and related financial data in one place, as well as provide an external portal for contractors and developers to upload CIP's submittals and invoices in one consistent, reliable, and trackable platform. This is scheduled to be completed by the end of the calendar year. Another one is a website redesign. That's a redesign of our website to enhance navigation, improve visual appearance, and ensure ADA compliance. ERP Needs Assessment will assess our current financial and HR application. The vendor has been selected, and we hope to kick off this project before the end of the calendar year. And then, finally, we have Tech Refresh. We have on-prem servers and storage that will be moving where applicable to a cloud-hosted solution. So, this is in preparation for any work that may be happening in the City Hall and moving our gear out. Also, this is one that's pretty exciting. We're replacing our existing extraterrestrial internet connection that is used as a tertiary backup with a more modern solution. So, we do have fiber. We do have the traditional wireless connection, but now we want to go with extraterrestrial. We have one in place. We're just enhancing it. And with that, I'll move to any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. We have allocated five minutes for the update. And so, I'm going to go ahead and thank you for that and congratulate you and IT for all the wonderful suite of projects that you have and, you know, that are literally touching every aspect of what we do as a city. And so, we're very appreciative of the work. So, thanks as well, Benny and Terry. And we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. That is the Consent Calendar. I will remind everyone that during our postponements and orders of the day motion, we went ahead and stated that anything that we pull from the Consent Calendar is going to go after item 24. And so, let me ask our, let me ask our council, are there any requests for items on the Consent Calendar? And that Consent Calendar is from item 7 to 19 that we would like to pull this evening. Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised.
Thank you. I'd like to pull items 12 and 17.
Okay. Councilmember Moore requests the Climate Action Plan item number 12, as well as the Library Commission's recommendation for a poet laureate, item number 17, be pulled from the Consent Calendar. Are there any other requests for Consent Calendar items to be pulled? Okay. Prior to entertaining a motion for the Consent Calendar items that have not been pulled, I'll go ahead and go to the attendees with their hands raised. If you would like to speak on the Consent Calendar, again, that's items 7 through 19, with a reminder that items 12 and 19 are proposed to be pulled at this point pending a motion, I'll go ahead and call on you. Don Halsey, you have your hand raised. And so, if you'd like to speak on the Consent Calendar, please do so. You'll have three minutes to speak with the same provisions with regard to speaking, applying to members of the public that we've described earlier in this meeting.
So, unmuted myself.
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to let you know that I did send in the slides, and I found that my earlier slides got sent to a no reply address. So, you got them, and if you could distribute them, that's fine. That's all I had.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you very much, Don. And we'll go ahead and bring this back to the dais for a motion. I believe that would be on items 7 through 11, as well as 13 through 16, 18, and 19. Would anyone like to move those items as recommended in the agenda? And I don't see any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and move that, put that motion on the table. I see actually two hands, but Councilmember Moore has a hand raised in Zoom. Councilmember Moore, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow, you had a hand raised. Did you want to speak to the motion? Okay. So, let's go ahead and seeing no other hands. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote on items 7 through 11, 13 through 16, 18, and 19 on the Consent Calendar as recommended?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, I'm going to go ahead and remind everyone that we're going to go ahead and look at items 20, 21, 23, and then 22, and then 24. And then, time allowing, we'll get to items 12 and 17 pulled from the Consent Calendar. So, at this point, we're on item 20. This is a second reading of an ordinance. That ordinance had to do with the Audit Committee's duties, powers, and responsibilities. Let me go ahead and provide this to, since this is a second reading, I, let me ask this of the presenter, Thomas Leong from the Finance Department, Senior Management Analyst. Thomas, has anything changed in the proposed ordinance between our first reading and now the second reading of the ordinance? I presume the answer is no.
No, nothing has changed. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. And so, let's do this. Prior to entertaining a motion, I don't see any members of the public with hands raised on this item. Let's go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct the second reading of this ordinance. Madam City Clerk.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 22-2243, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending Municipal Code Section 2.88.100 Audit Committee Duties, Powers, and Responsibilities.
And may I have an omnibus motion from the council with regard to enactment of the, or the approval of the second reading, together with enactment of this ordinance to Code Section 2.88.100?
So moved.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chow moves the second reading. In addition to enactment, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion? And I see a hand raised from Councilmember Willie.
I second.
Very good. Are there any further hands raised for discussion on this second reading and enactment motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Under public hearings, as a heading on the agenda, we have no items. The following heading is Ordinances and Action Items. Item 21 is, should be the consideration of the approval of the July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025 Memorandum of Understanding Setting the Salary and Terms and Conditions of Employment for the Operating Engineers Local Number Three Union, AFL-CIO, also known as OE3. And our presenter is our Director of Administrative Services, Christina Alfaro. Christina, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and good evening, City Council. I have a very brief oral presentation on this action item. The Memorandum of Understanding for Operating Engineers III, or OE3, expired on June 30th, 2022. The city has been in negotiations with OE3 since the spring and has reached a tentative agreement. The agreement is now being brought to City Council for their approval. Some highlights of the tentative agreement include its term, three years, beginning on July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. Cost of Living Adjustment, or COLAs, 5% in year one and for years two and year three of the Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU. OE3 has agreed to reopen negotiations concerning COLAs for fiscal year 23, '24 and fiscal year 24, '25. There's also a one-time $3,800 non-pensionable lump sum payment in addition to adding the Juneteenth holiday starting in 2023. The city will incur additional costs of $471,742 in the first year, fiscal year 22, '23, for OE3 employees. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available should there be any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Alfaro. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? This is item number 21 on the council agenda. I don't see any hands raised. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards on this item? Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards on this item?
No, mayor.
And has anyone emailed you asking to have the comments read into the record?
No, mayor.
Okay, I see a hand raised from councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, would you like to place a motion on the dais for our consideration at this time? You might want to turn off your microphone on your computer.
All right. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Okay, so I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one-zero-one, amending the memorandum of understanding for the operating engineers, Local Number Three Union AFL-CIO OE three, based on the attached tentative agreements, to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one-zero-two to approve budget modification twenty-three dash two-three-two, increasing budget appropriations by four hundred and seventy-one-thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, ensuring that there are sufficient budget appropriations to cover the costs associated with the negotiated contract, and three, approve the corresponding salary schedule for OE three employees effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Would anyone like to second councilmember Moore's motion? Vice Mayor, I see your hand is raised, but I also see councilmember Wei's hand is raised in Zoom. I'm fine with either one of the seconds. Vice Mayor, what's your pleasure? Councilmember Wei, would you like to second the motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, excellent. We have a motion and a second on the table. Does anyone care to discuss this motion or item prior to taking a vote? Okay, councilmember Moore, I do see that you've raised your hand. So did you want to make commentary on this before?
I just want to clarify this, this, the last item, effective July first, two thousand twenty-two?
It becomes retroactive to this past month and a half. And Director Alfaro or anybody in city staff can go ahead and confirm that.
Okay, and does it, does that mean because there's been a change that there would be, that you would need to add some payments? Or, or no? Because now you've got a salary change, and it's retroactive. How does that work?
Right, I think people just get a bump in their next paycheck essentially, is to get the retroactive rate. But Director Alfaro, you would know better than I the details of this, and so why don't you speak to that?
Yes, so there would be a retroactive calculation that would need to occur, so our payroll staff does need some time to make that calculation. So we will have a schedule following council's adoption of this item, should that occur, where we will be communicating with employees when they can anticipate to receive the retro payment after the pay periods that have already occurred this fiscal year.
Okay, very good. And I'll just note that the beginning of our fiscal year is July first, and so that's, you know, I think covering the, the reasoning in case anyone was wondering. So Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. Did you want to discuss a point?
So a question, I think I, when I was on the CUST board, we have three unions, and I am often confused who belongs to which union. So twenty-two is, so could we get some clarification on the three different, we have unrepresented employee, and we have the Cupertino Employee Association, and then we have this, the current item? Could we get some on?
Okay, well, thanks for the question, Vice Mayor Chow. I think for the benefit of the public, let's have a brief summary of OE three, which is what we're considering now, and then CEA, which is what we're considering in the next item, as well as the unrepresented, which we are considering in the item after that, which are respectively twenty-three and twenty-two, because we reordered the items at the beginning of the agenda. So Christina, did you want to give a brief summary as to the differences between OE three, CEA, and the unrepresented employees?
Yes, so our OE three bargaining unit consists mostly of our maintenance workers, one, two, three, along with our mechanic classifications, and I believe our streetlight technicians. And those are all listed in the actual agreement. You can see all of the different classifications that are there, but that is the bulk of the positions are really our maintenance workers.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much, Director Alfaro, and councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor. I'll just make a very brief, you know, commentary. We're very appreciative of the work that is set forth. We're in such a unique social and economic circumstance right now, and so I, I think I'm not running, you know, foul of any disclosure requirements when I say that our council was very much supportive of providing the employees what they need at this time, and we're very happy to have that cooperative relationship. It's, you know, an extremely well-run ship, as well as a good relationship between us and the employee base that I think is very reflective of the items that you see in front of us tonight with regard to the compensation and benefits. So that's my comment. I don't see any further hands raised on this point or item. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could please take a roll call vote on the motion on the table.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Item number twenty-three is next. Item number twenty-three, again, should be the consideration of the approval of the July first through two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five memorandum of understanding, setting the salary and terms and conditions of employment for the Cupertino City Employees Association, or CEA, represented by a representative from IFPTE Local Twenty-One. And so again, Director Alfaro, would you like to provide the presentation for this item number twenty-three?
Yes, I have another brief oral report. So thank you, Mayor Paul. The memorandum of understanding for Cupertino Employees Association, or CEA, represented by IFPTE Local Twenty-One, expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The city has been in negotiations with CEA since spring and has reached tentative agreement. Some of the highlights of the agreement, tentative agreement include, these are very similar, actually, almost exact to the ones that I just read off OE three, so a three-year term, beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, cost of living adjustment of five percent. And then again, the option to reopen negotiations on compensation in years two and three of the contract, a one-time lump sum, non-pensionable payment of three thousand eight-hundred dollars, and the addition of Juneteenth as a paid holiday. I do want to point out that our Cupertino Employees Association is made up of our professional staff in both Public Works and our Community Development Department, including planners, engineers, plan check, and also our recreation coordinators and other various recreation staff, along with our, our administrative staff, like our senior office assistants and office assistants as well. Should the contract tentative agreement be approved this evening, the city would incur an additional cost of seven hundred and twenty-one-thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars in the first year of the agreement.
Thank you very much, Director Alfaro. Once again, I'll bring this to the members of the public. I don't see any hands raised from our public on Zoom. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards from the public to speak on this item number twenty-three?
No, mayor.
And were there any emails that came in asking you to speak into the record, any comments?
No, mayor.
Okay, very good. So let's go ahead and move this back to council. I don't see any hands raised presently with regard to this, but I will ask for a motion on item twenty-three. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Okay, so I move to adopt the draft Resolution twenty-two dash one-oh-seven, amending the memorandum of understanding for Cupertino City Employees Association, IFPTE Local Twenty-One, based on the attended, attached tentative agreements, and adopt the draft Resolution twenty-two dash one-oh-eight to approve budget modification twenty-three dash two-two-three-three, increasing appropriations by seven hundred twenty-one-thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, ensuring that there are sufficient budget appropriations to cover the costs associated with the negotiated contract, and approve the corresponding salary schedule for CEA employees effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Is there a second to this motion? And I'll just go by, councilmember Willie, your hand is raised.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second for item number twenty-three. I don't see any further indications or hands for further discussion. That being the case, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And now we're back to item number twenty-two. The subject here is to consider, once again, approving and updating the salary and terms, conditions of employment, and new job classification for the unrepresented management and confidential employees and appointed employees. I'm going to go ahead before I turn this over to Director Alfaro and read a statement. This has been requested of me to read this orally here, and so I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. In accordance with Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-three-C-three, I am providing an oral summary of the recommended action. The item before the council tonight is to approve and update the salary and benefits of the city's assistant city manager and department heads who participate in the city's unrepresented employees compensation program effective August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The proposed increase to salary and benefits effective August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two is as follows. The position of assistant city manager, which is filled, in the amount of twenty-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two. The position of assistant city manager that is presently vacant, eighteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-five. The position of chief technology officer in the amount of eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen. The position of director of administrative services, eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen. The position of director of community development, eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen. The position of director of parks and recreation, eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen. And the position of director of public works, eighteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-two. Additional details regarding this item are set forth in the agenda and resolution associated with this item. And so now I will bring this over to Director Alfaro to present a brief staff presentation, if that is still needed for this item number twenty-two. Director Alfaro.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Good evening once again. Historically, the council has aligned the compensation plans for the unrepresented and appointed employee groups with the proposed terms and conditions of employment for the Cupertino Employees Association, or CEA. Based on the action by council in the prior items, staff is requesting the council adopt relevant changes to the unrepresented compensation program and appointed employees compensation program as appropriate from the new CEA Local Twenty-One compensation changes. Some highlights of the changes we are requesting are a similar term, same term actually, three years, beginning in July one, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, five percent cost of living adjustment in year one for years two and years three. Should CEA reopen negotiations, and should there be recommendations for additional increases? The results from those reopen negotiations will be, if approved by council, applied to the unrepresented management and confidential employees group. This also includes a one-time, non-pensionable, three-thousand-eight-hundred-dollar lump sum payment for the unrepresented group only, and adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday in two thousand twenty-three. Members of this group include city management staff, along with positions of confidential designations, such as executive assistant and administrative assistance within the city, along with a human resource staff, payroll staff, and IT staff. The city will incur an additional cost of one million, one-fifty-two, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars in the first year for unrepresented and appointed employees. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Director Alfaro. At this time, I'm going to go and see if any members of the public would like to comment on this item number twenty-two. Let me see if I'm reading this correctly. City Attorney Jensen, did you want to speak on anything at this time?
Not at this time.
Not, not at this time, okay, very good. So I don't see any hands raised in Zoom. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards for live speakers on this item twenty-two?
No, mayor.
Were there any emails that came in asking you to read any commentary into the record on this item?
No, mayor.
Okay, let us go ahead and move back to the dais with regard to a motion on item twenty-two. Would anyone like to move by reference the recommended action in the agenda for item twenty-two? And so if you would like to do so, please simply state, I'd like to move item twenty-two as recommended in the agenda. And I don't know who unmuted their computer, but thanks for muting it again. Councilmember Moore, did you want to move the item?
Yes, so moved. I do have a question if I do get a second.
Okay, very well. I'll go ahead and ask for a second. Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second on the dais. Councilmember Moore, did you want to ask your question at this time?
Yes, so looking at page thirty of the agenda packet for this particular item, it's PDF thirteen oh-one. I'm looking at the finance manager step salaries that you have listed, steps one through five, and I, this is something that you can answer offline if you like. I'm just wondering if our finance managers' duties and responsibilities, if those are more in line with a finance director from another city? And then along with that question, would, would the, the duties and responsibilities warrant a different pay structure? So you can provide that information offline. I'm going to assume that this is, this is appropriate to what the duties are currently. I'm just wondering if maybe our finance manager is, needs to work more in the role of a, of a director and should have a different pay structure associated with that position? Thank you.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and refer your inquiry to either Director Alfaro or our city attorney, or Diane, if you wanted to speak on this as acting city manager, please feel free to do so, but is there any follow-up from staff on this at this point? I don't see, okay, Diane, yeah, go ahead.
I would.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Christina.
Yeah, I would defer that, the answer to Christina Alfaro.
Okay, sorry, you guys are, yeah, okay. Thank you, Diane. Christina?
Yes, so the last time we looked at this position, we found that the manager level was sufficient in terms of, when looking at other agencies that are similarly sized, Cupertino with a similar structure in terms of number of employees, what they oversee. So the last time we did look at it, we did find that it was in line with the other agencies that we surveyed that are similar to our size. Every city does tend to have a different structure. They don't follow necessarily the same structure, but when our outside consultant looked at it, they thought it was classified appropriately.
Okay, and when you say our outside people, Director Alfaro, are you referring to the internal auditor or some external auditor? Or who are we talking about here?
No, we did a classification study a few years back where they looked at different classifications in the city to ensure they were classified appropriately before we began to do a salary survey.
So you're referring to an outside consultant that was retained by the city for this classification study a number of years ago? Or some years ago? Okay, very good. And without putting too fine a point in it, I think it's part of discussion with regard to perhaps structure